Yes. Most of, most of you. Oh, yeah. This is a, this is special meeting, correct, Liz? No problem. Okay. It is five oh two. I'd like to call the special meeting for the city of San Juan Batista's city council on Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Can we start with the pledge, John? Would you like to show us?
Right? Ready? Yeah. Our pledge allegiance to apply United States of America, to the Republic of which stands my nation and under the rule of liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, something's missing. What did? Oh, it's clean. Oh, okay. Liz, can we have a roll call, please? These are confusing me over here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jordan, here. Councilmember Morris Lopez. Councilmember Sebastian.
Here.
Mayor Frios.
Here. Okay. We are rolling right into closed session. Uh, we have glasses on. Three items. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation, Barasco versus City of San Juan Batista. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. And that would be government section code five, four, nine, five, six, dash, nine. And then we have a public employees' performance evaluation under government code five, four, nine, five, six, dot, seven. Hey. Good?
The public comment.
Oh, yeah. Do we have any public comments on the closed session?
Nobody in chambers and nobody on Zoom.
Thank you.
General Public. Mayor, Mayor, we have with us tonight our public safety coordinator, Roy Morales, and he is associated with item two B. So maybe you take that one first. So like thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Hey, waiting for Liz. Good, okay. All right, let's resume the Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four special city council meeting. And if the city attorney can report out on our closed session, please. Okay. Perfect. Um, before we go to public comments, I'd like to, uh, open the meeting in honor of Cal Fire Fire Apparatus Engineer, Christopher Chris Ward, who last week lost his life in um, South San Benito County. If we can just take a moment, please. Godspeed, brother. Hey, so next up is public comment. Um, and public comment. Comments are limited to items on the special, um, agenda meeting. Um, Liz, can we just? If they're, if they're just each one of them, can we just? Any, any, any of the public comment on each item? Can we just use that or? Because it might be, it might get redundant. Perfect. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, um, next is we have a presentation uh, from Holly Kennedy, San Benito County Water District.
All right. Hey, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Holly. Welcome aboard. We're sorry Jeff could not make it. Jeff Catano, the general manager, has a conflict tonight, but Holly is an expert at regional water systems, which San Juan Batista is now proud to be a part of. So go ahead, Holly. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I know. He ended up with a board meeting tonight, too. Um, I have a presentation I'm going to go ahead and share with you. Right? Okay, you should be able to see my presentation now on your screens. So I'm gonna just give an overview of our, um, recent uh, water supply and treatment master plan update for the San Benito urban areas. And that includes San Juan Batista, um, and the city of Hollister, basically, including sort of the, the, the surrounding urban area in the city of Hollister. A little bit of background, what the master plan objectives included and the key findings, and then an update on a current project that's ongoing that was recommended as part of the master plan. Kind of what, what's coming up next. So just in terms of background, um, a, a number of the agencies that have, um, responsibility for water and wastewater in the county came together back in two thousand and four, two decades ago, and signed an MOU to basically to lay the foundation for collaborating on regional solutions relative to water and wastewater. That MOU has been updated and amended to add additional partners through the course of those two decades, including most recently San Juan Batista um, in two thousand twenty-one. The results of that MOU and the collaboration that has occurred amongst the agencies are some pretty major infrastructure projects that have happened for the urban areas, including the city of Hollister's wastewater reclamation plant, um, upgrades at the Ridge Mark wastewater plant, upgrades at the existing La Salt Water Treatment Plant, a brand new water treatment plant, um, the West Hills plant, um, some recycled water pipe, pipelines and, um, and, uh, and a large transmission line for high quality treated water, um, from the West Hills plant over to the Sunny Slope, uh, sort of the western side of the city of Hollister. All told, that's about a hundred and fifty million dollars in capital infrastructure that the, that the regional parties, the city of Hollister, Sunny Slope County Water District, County of San Benito, and San Benito County Water District, um, collaborated on to deliver over the last, um, two decades. So most recently, we undertook an effort to update the master plan to really evaluate the water supply and treatment needs for the urban areas. Um, so that master plan was completed, uh, late last year, two thousand twenty-three. The original or the objectives of that master plan included providing a continuous improvement towards achieving drinking water and recycled water quality goals. And here we're speaking really about hardness um, for the water supply. As you know, if there's high hard water, people are using water softeners. Then they're flushed after they use the water, it's getting flushed to the sewer system, and then it's going basically percolated into the ground, the wastewater is the, the effluent wastewater, it had been percolated into the ground, and it's impacting the groundwater basin. So that has been a major focus is improving the drinking water supply. So we, you know, for the benefit of everybody, and then that, um, in turn benefits the, the groundwater basin. Um, we also want to continue efforts to identify and implement water supply options to increase dry your water supply reliability. We've had a number of droughts over the last decade, really, that have really heightened the awareness on the need for a reliable water supply for the urban areas. Uh, we want to be able to respond to long-term growth to the extent that people are, are wanting to build and move to the urban areas in San Benito County. We need to have water available to make that happen, um, to accommodate that, um, growth. Um, so that's in response to general plans that are established at the county level, at the city level, so on. Um, we have to address and mitigate impacts to groundwater quality and supply. So I noted that. Um, and then there's other ongoing legislation and projects that needed, that needed to be incorporated and wrapped into the master plan. Um, so this, uh, state's groundwater management act had been, um, approved uh, between now, between this most recent update and the prior master plan that had been, um, conducted. And so we really needed to really increase the focus and just think about how the groundwater was being managed. And then San Juan Batista joined the MOU party and, uh, you're going to be eventually here getting treated surface water from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. So we needed to wrap in the additional demand associated with that and, and, and what does that mean for um, for the overall plan program? And then again, the goal is to focus on providing these solutions in a regional coordinated fashion. So I'm just gonna, we had all kinds of process and meetings along the way, got a lot of really great input. Um, so I'm gonna just dive right to the key, um, findings of the master plan. Um, the water hardness level of service goals are a key driver. So that's the, that's the hardness. That's kind of that taste that you have in your drinking water. When you taste it or it's a little bit kind of cloudy. Um, and so we really established that a hundred and eighty milligrams per liter requires about eighty percent of your drinking water supply to be surface water. And that's sort of broadly for the whole urban areas, but to meet that based on the hardness in the existing groundwater, um, having that blend with the new surface water, it really, it's about eighty percent of that imported surface water, high quality water that has to be blended with the higher hardness groundwater to meet that goal. Um, and that goal is, that's, that's, that's sort of a, a general, um, goal established of sixty milligrams per liter of hardness is like soft water, a hundred and twenty is like normal, a hundred and fifty is starting to get hard. And so our goal is generally between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty. The groundwater in the city of Hollister's wells ranges anywhere from three hundred to four hundred milligrams per liter, just to give you a, a sense. It's, it's very hard. Um, the current water supply is sufficient to meet current water demand in a normal year, like when, when it's raining, like we all remember it, you know, in the good old days. Um, there's enough water for everybody that needs it, but when we have dry years and those really drought, um, severe years, there's a deficit of about twelve hundred acre feet of high quality water to meet our existing demand. So that's something we need to shore up going forward so that our existing customers have, um, available water supply in the drought years. And then, um, we need an additional supply of high quality water for growth, um, to that point where people, people want to move to um, the city of Hollister and San Juan Batista. And, um, so we're gonna have to have some more supply. Um, to achieve all of that, these are a couple of the key master plan recommendations. Um, and the one that's maybe buried in here that's not obvious is um, that I should just say off the bat is we have to expand the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. Um, that's included actually as part of this first phase of the ASR project. That'll be the source of water supply for the ASR project. I'll talk about that in a minute. We're, um, we're referring to that ASR. So ASR is Aqua Fer storage and recovery. So this is where you inject, um, treated water into the groundwater basin. We're referring to that project is, um, as A-DROP. Um, it's called the accelerated drought, um, resistance, no, reliability project. Drought reliability project to meet, um, so and that, that project is needed to really close that gap for the existing customers during those drought years. So that creates storage in the existing groundwater basin of high quality waters so that we have that available in drought years. The second key project there was to pursue the, um, the expansion of San Luis Reservoir, which is the BF Sisk Dam raise. So that allows the expansion of the reservoir in collaboration with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, who, um, owns and operates that reservoir. Um, that'll create storage for additional water supplies for those, um, future customers that would like to connect to the system. And then the last one here is to implement the transmission pipeline to take water from the West Hills Water Treatment Plant out to you all in San Juan Batista. So that was a, a key. It was a key finding. We gotta get the, we gotta get the water to you. So here is just an overview. I mentioned that ASR, the Aqua For Storage and Recovery Project, A-DROP. Um, just wanted to give you a little, um, heads up on that. It might be a project that you're a little less familiar with, but given that it's a project that's needed to serve existing customers and it is underway, thought I'd spend a slide or two giving you an overview of that. Um, the project capacity, um, has a, it's an injection capacity of about three thousand two hundred acre feet of water in wet years. And we would be getting that water from the existing contract with the USBR, US, USBR, or other, other agencies, organizations in the Central Valley that may have or in the foothills that may have additional water supplies in a year where you can make a short-term purchase and, and basically purchase their water, import it into the basin, treat it and inject it into the groundwater basin. So we would inject, um, a capacity of thirty-two hundred acre feet a year. And then in dry years, we could extract that water when, when we have a limited amount of imported surface water. Um, and on average, that would be about thirteen hundred acre feet a year that we would be able to, to extract over, over a series of dry years. That's really to close that gap for existing customers to shore up the water supply reliability in dry years. That's the purpose of this project. The key elements of the project include expansion of the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. Um, that is set to go, that's designed, it's been through SEQA, it's set to go to bid next month for construction. Um, and then there are five ASR wells, um, and new pipelines to take water um, to sort of the north side in this map over here, you're seeing, this is the city of Hollister. This is kind of the airport area out here. But to get water from, um, the, the existing distribution system up to the north side of town where we would inject it in these special ASR wells where you inject water in and then you extract water back out. Um, the design for that is underway, as is SEQA and NEPA, and that is set to go to bid in, um, about the first quarter of two thousand twenty-five. Overall, that project is scheduled to go through mid-two thousand twenty-six and has a capital cost of roughly forty-six million dollars. The good news is, um, because of the state and federal recognition that water supply is so critical and we need to really focus on drought resiliency, we need to focus on managing the groundwater basin, we need to do things in a, um, in a way where there's multi-benefits. There are a lot of grants available for these types of projects. And so we have pursued, applied for a number of grants. We've been successful in, um, in a being awarded or selected for three so far. Those are listed here. The, um, the IRWM grant is a, is a grant that's funded through the um, California Department of Water Resources for integrated, um, regional water, um, projects. The second one there is the DWR, um, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act funding. Um, that's part of a round two grant application process. And then the last one is a small storage grant with USBR. And you can see the grant awards there, um, totaling about twenty, twenty-two and a half million dollars is what we think when, once that USBR one is actually um, settled out, um, and contracted, where we get the agreements in place. So roughly half of the project, um, maybe, uh, we may be able to fund with grant funds. So that really reduces the cost for existing customers, which is always great. Um, in terms of next steps, there's a lot of stuff, um, that, you know, needs to continue to go forward. We've wrapped up the master plan. Um, but we have to complete the design and permitting of that, um, that project that I was just talking about, initiate construction. There are other options for multiple, um, or there are other options for long-term storage that we have to keep in play because permitting and priorities in the state costs escalate, regulations change. So we have to kind of keep a number of things, um, in, in the air. So the BF Sisk project that I mentioned, there were a few others that were evaluated during the master plan as well that may, uh, that may need to be reevaluated in a, in a future master plan effort. Um, you've got your pipeline, um, project that's going to move forward to convey that water from West Hills, um, out to San Juan Batista. And then as part of all of this, this regional solution, there's various funding and financing strategies that have to be um, formalized, finalized, updating institutional agreements. Who's gonna pay for what and how and qualities of water? And, you know, all of those kinds of things have to be done. We're doing stakeholder outreach on the project, particularly the A-DROP project. Um, and then in the future, there will be an update of the, of the wastewater piece of the master plan, the wastewater recycled water component. Um, and typically we do these master plans on about an every five-year basis because forecasting growth and demand is um, variable and the needs change over time. So, um, so that's, that's what I've got for you this evening. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Thank you. John, questions?
Thank you, Holly, for the great report. I, I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Okay.
Leslie, anything?
I don't either. Thanks, Holly. Nice seeing you again.
You too.
I was gonna itch your trigger finger. You're next. Nothing? Okay. Um, no, uh, thank you for the presentation. I think we have some public comment.
Michael, you have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So Holly, I have a question on the ASR, um, wells or any plan in San Juan Batista Aqua For Basin? Um, I know that in the, uh, water world, the slogan is dilution is the solution. I, I feel if we have a ASR well in San Juan that would bring more water into our basin, that would help to dilute the hardness of our water and possibly lessen the demand from West Hills. Um, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I can address that question. Right now, this first phase of the ASR project is really focusing five wells on the north side of Hollister. Um, San Benito County Water District has a, a, an expert groundwater, um, firm that does all of the groundwater modeling, and they've identified this particular area as sort of the maybe, maybe the, the better location to put to try this in this basin. And so there is a plan to have, you know, a phase two, and that may grow beyond in the future as the need expands. But in this first phase, as they did their evaluation, it was, it was really determined that that location where we, um, where we're currently citing the wells is the sweet spot. Not to say it couldn't happen in the future, but the five walls that are currently planned are on the north side of the city of Hollister.
Thank you. Any public comment in the? Nope.
No other hands raised, mayor.
Okay, Holly, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night. Okay, moving along, uh, informational items, and we have the treasures report.
Uh, good evening. Uh, you have in your pack the financial report as at July thirty-first, representing one month of the city's fiscal year or eight percent of the fiscal year. Uh, general fund revenues are trending at eight percent as well as the expenditures. The net effect is a positive change in the general fund balance of twenty-one thousand dollars for the year to date. Water enterprise funds revenues are running at ten percent for the year to date and expenses are at seven percent, presenting a positive change in the water enterprise fund of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Uh, sewer enterprise fund revenues are running at nine percent as opposed to eight percent of budget. Um, and expenses are at seven percent, providing a positive change in the sewer enterprise fund for the one month of a hundred and one thousand dollars. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, uh, thank you, John. Any questions?
Uh, no, thank you. Thank you for the report. Uh, I like it that it's all to the positive.
Any questions, Leslie?
No, thank you.
Jackie, questions?
Yes. Yeah. Thank you, Holly. I had a question on the revenues pay, Wendy, sorry, that was the last speaker. Um, so Wendy, for the revenues generated, I'm trying to look at the different categories. Where might I find if it is on this page, collected, um, fines and fees that we have generated from maybe, um, uh, permits that we gather, business permits, but also more fines for violations of codes, et cetera, et cetera.
That would be in your community development revenue line items. Um, this is a summary report, uh, at the request of anyone, I can provide the more detail report that shows the detail if you're interested.
Yeah, I think it would be, be of us to have that available for us sitting here, but also the public because we just hired two full-time employees to that department, uh, safety coordinator director and also a other employee is code enforcement officer, which have been extremely busy. Um, so I'd like to see where the breakdown is and their work, their hard work. Thank you.
Questions? Oh, oh, I don't have any questions for her. Is there any questions from the studio audience?
Nobody in chambers and I'm seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Wendy. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. Council reports, uh, for the regional organizations and committees, John.
Um, Ambag meets tomorrow, Integrated Ways Management meets in the next week, uh, three C E meets next week. But I did attend a meeting, uh, a week and a half ago, uh, of the Holster Downtown Association in which it was presented to us, uh, one of my policy initiatives that I have wished for, for the city for the last three years. And it's gonna happen, and we're not gonna have to spend a do- dollar or a dime to get it to happen. And that is Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan will occur at the county level for all three jurisdictions. That includes Holster, San Juan Batista, and the county of San Benito. It's being done by the county of Santa Clara, which does cause me a little concern because we're kind of a pipsqueak next to them in terms of people, cars, all kinds of stuff you can imagine. Um, it's actually been done, um. Elizabeth, could we have it on the screen, please? Okay. Um, we're waiting here for a second. There we go. So a consultant named Ringcon Consultant was hired by, uh, the grant, or there's a grant from the EPA that is paying for the entire thing. The county is not paying for it. The city is not paying for it. The city of Holster is not paying for it. But we, the taxpayers of the federal government, are paying for it. So, um, these are the greenhouse gas results for the two counties, and the third one on the screen is the combined. You can see that there is some differences for us agriculture is twenty-one percent of our greenhouse gas emissions. And in Santa Clara County, it's two percent. No, one percent. So that's a huge difference. Um, I see that as an opportunity because farming can actually help in greenhouse gases with sequestration of carbon, doing certain farming techniques can actually be a huge plus. Um, we'll get in, I, I just wanted this as a kind of a general overview of what we're doing. And, and all, all these, um, statistical measurements were done by a, a company called Ringcon Consultants out of, uh, Alameda, California, and, and they've done it for many, many other jurisdictions around. And what I'm extremely pleased about is, for example, city of Monterey about three years ago or four years ago did, did a, um, climate action plan, it cost them a half a million bucks. And all, all they got was this. We're not gonna, so this will enable us to get the grants to improve the situation, and we won't have to spend a half a million bucks on finding out what we have to do because you have to know where you're at before you know where you have to go. So that's why the Climate Action Plan is very important. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thanks. Thanks. Leslie, anything?
Super cool. Intergovernmental, uh, we talked about the unhoused. And, um, it's gonna continue over to the following. Month. Five monthly.
Anything, Jackie?
All right. Yeah, we did also, um, yeah, we talked about the homeless, houseless individuals because it's based on. The county board of supervisors voted, um. Ordinance resolution? What was it? Resolution, um, that was brought about by the Supreme Court's decision. That filter down to the states and then Governor Newsom has now given the power to the cities to, um. Approach and. Handle, come up with solutions for homeless encampments. It was a very emotional topic. There is a lot of discussion around it. Differences of ideas, uh, moving to a solution. Um, but like I said, it was very emotional because there's a human side to it. It's not a one size fits all for any city. Or any individual that is experiencing homelessness and. We can't pretend to understand being in anyone's shoes if we're not in those shoes. So we decided to bring it back. And discuss it further, but there is a clock ticking. Where I believe the county board of supervisors wanted action within thirty days. That's what I understand. Uh, we are fortunate, uh, in San Juan Batista. Not to have a huge population, but we have had some instances and I'm sure. A city staffer, um, safety director, Mr. Roy Morales. Can probably speak a little bit to that when he gives his report. But anyway, that's what we talked about.
It, it's, it, it went around, um. HPD and the sheriff's department cleaning up the river.
River, yeah.
Um, and, and what to do and how to do it. And they were bringing in every agency in the county. To work on. How, how it was going to happen and that's where the thirty days comes in. Hollister PD has been already in, in the river. There was an incident a couple of weeks ago. And the high school got, was on lockdown and, uh. The superintendent was there and, uh, you don't. I didn't hear, understand the, the full impact of, of what was going on, but the emotional duress that the, that the students were under. Um, when you hear shootings. Um, so yeah, it's a pretty serious thing and, um. We've been throwing it around for several years now and. Now that the state has, has gotten rid of the, the Boise Act. We can. Start moving forward.
Right. One of the things that I have to say personally, our district two supervisor is very passionate. I'm, I was surprised. He's very. I would say militant about it. Maybe that's not the proper word. But of, and then I heard talk from another supervisor about, and I understand the frustration because it is. Dangerous. People don't want to walk by the river. There's leaching of maybe toxic chemicals coming from abandoned cars. Fires that can be started. And then two weeks ago, the air, air gun, uh, incident that put the school on lockdown. And then untimely shooting in Georgia that followed, right? So it's horrible. But, um. So one of the solutions that was tossed out, which I really think we have to be careful of. Is giving vouchers to some of these individuals to maybe reunite with family. And so there's a current case that came up now and I believe was it Santa Cruz? Where a jurisdiction PD from the valley, Hanford. Is now under investigation and probably a litigation and state stuff to follow. So we must be very cognizant and mindful and careful of that because if we're gonna give people one-way bus tickets. There has to be, you know, an opportunity for services. Because it could pan out to look like we're dumping. When there's really no services or no family. But anyway, it's, it's a tough situation. And then just last and briefly, uh, I'd like to just have a moment of silence and recognition. For one of our former city employees, may, uh, utility crew, Mr. Carlos Figueroa, who is a lifelong resident. Of this town and his family still is here and his children. So I just want a moment of silence for Mr. Carlos Figueroa. I did not under- know that he was ill. Thank you.
DJ, do you have anything? Uh, I missed today's CMAP board meeting, um, and then I will be attending on Thursday. LAFCO. Okay. Great. No cog in August, however, on Friday from ten to one over at the community foundation, um, will be a highway twenty-five workshop. Publix invited, everybody's invited. It's, it's, uh, going to be another eye opener. So hopefully. Well, you'll be gone. Don, you're gonna be out of town for that? Okay, yeah. But yeah, please, uh, if you want to attend, please attend. Fire district meeting, Don, you're gonna cover pretty much what went over. Yeah. I don't want to bring that up again. So, um, okay. Moving right along to. Any city council announcements other than our boards?
Yes, I have an announcement. Um, I also attended a Central Coast Broadband Consortium meeting a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that came out was that, um, there is something called ADAR funds from the. PUC that can help us lower our water costs. Okay, so let me tell you how. We're gonna have an asset called a trench that's five miles long from San Juan to Hollister. And in that trench will go the water pipe. Right on top or next to the water pipe can go a conduit which holds, which will hold. If people want. Fiber optic cable. Middle mile fiber optic cable, not, not the last mile, middle mile, which is a thicker cable, a bigger cable. And we can get funds to help dig the ditch and we can get funds to buy the, the conduit. And at that point, we lease space in the conduit out to ISPs. That would be Charter, AT&T. Uh, South LA Internet, all kinds of people. And then they put, then we have a revenue stream, money coming in and we can, I would suggest that we use that money. To pay down the water debt and lower water bills for our residents. Because just like every one of us, I've heard. All the complaints. And this is a way we can make some money off of literally a hole in the ground or a trench in the ground. And use that money to pay for the water. And that's really important to me. I think we should do that. We probably need to establish a one, a dig once policy, which I talked about three years ago. It didn't go anywhere. I'm leaving the console. Some of you need to pick up that up and do it so we can have a revenue stream to lower our bills. That's really important to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leslie, anything? Call me. Nothing? Okay, um, this morning I had a super important meeting. And Leslie, once again, you were right. It was super fun. I got to meet with, um. Mrs. Callahan's second grade class. And it was, it was a series of questions and. Pretty impressive for second graders, I have to say.
My highlight as a mayor.
Yeah.
Sitting, sitting there.
I walked away just with a big old smile. And the classroom was, uh, was Mr. Jordan's classroom. So a lot, brought back a lot of memories and, um. They sent me home with a. Our worksheet with the, the to-do list. Yeah, I'm just gonna grab, I'm gonna grab three, just randomly just grab three what they think we should have. Oh. A water park. Uh, a new park and a garden market. Smart kid. Oh, and another water park. I can say just about every one of these is a water park. So it was, it was a. It was a treat. So I thank you, Mrs. Callahan for the invitation and thanks for the. Invitation from the second graders and it was the first time I'd been in San Juan school since, gosh. Probably the late nineties. So a lot of stuff. And they gave me the scoop on the school and what's coming down and. You know, they're losing. All the old clusters are gone. They're gonna take them all down, which is just like a. You know, that brought back, they still have remember the clocks? So I took a picture one and I asked, can I have one of those clocks when they take these things down? Because, because Raymond C. Wilson would give announcements over those, uh, every morning. It was great. So. That was fun. Okay. Now back to being serious. City managers' report.
In addition to the city manager's report, we have the pleasure of having the fire chief with us today and maybe Jonathan Goulding. Chief Goulding wants to give us an update on the fire department the past month. And then we'll, uh, hear from Roy or Roy Morales, our public safety coordinator. There you go.
Before I get to the fire stuff, just so you know, the cleanup there is on Friday. The sheriff, uh, fire department Hollister, we're discussing. There's a county encampment ban. We need to finalize the rate quality, discuss the next steps. For the San Benito, we're in the cleanup, so along with, you know, you're saying. To the fire report. Uh, month of August. This fire station responded to sixty-two calls. Of those sixty-two calls, uh, two of them were fires, eight of them were vehicle accidents. Uh, there's twenty-nine medical injuries. There were several canceled in route or good intent act calls. We're not up to speed here, ten calls earlier dispatch something. Chill out, but it turns out that an illegal dispatch team, like a medical aid, that might be a transient or a sleepy. Or a fire that happened to ski, something like that. For is the fires.
Thank you. Any, John, any questions? Question for the chief?
No requests, Southern. Thank you for, for what you do and, um. I'll talk to Roy about the North Street accident.
Any questions, Leslie, concerns?
Sorry, I lost it. I lost it. Thank you. Sorry.
That's right. I think I'll be making another appearance here in a few minutes.
Thank you, chief. Um, what time is that meeting on Friday with the pro? The plan to do the?
It's at twelve thirty, one thirty, it's a Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if you could. For us, if you. Thank you guys, the San Juan crew for. The display and, and for folks that don't know out there, it's, uh, that's the three hundred and forty-three firefighters from New York that we lost in the towers. Thank you. Tomorrow, yeah.
We do have a hand raised.
Here we go.
Carl, you have three minutes?
Hi, city councilman. Okay, I just want to mention, I don't think the mic is on. So those of us who are zooming in, we could not really hear the, the fire chief report. Thank you.
Is it green?
Yeah, it was green, but.
Okay. Is that better? Oh.
Can you give me your report over?
Sure, as long as Roy can give me the, uh.
Thank you, chief. Okay, so sixty-two calls were run out of the San Juan Batista Fire Station. Uh, of those calls, two of them were fires. Uh, twenty-nine medical aids, eight of them were vehicle accidents. The rest were good intent calls or we were canceled en route. Uh, good intent calls would be calls that we showed up for that were. Either like a medical call that the person actually wasn't having a medical emergency or something that might have appeared to be a fire that was steam or something like that. Uh, the structure of fire included a mobile home fire in San Benito County, a grass fire on Frank- Franklin Street. Um, the vehicle accidents, there was one on North Street, one at one fifty-six in the Alameda and all the rest were out in San Benito County. The inspections included a new business inspection, two residential inspections, uh, San Juan Day, uh, event inspection. And two miscellaneous inspections, there, there are annual business inspections. And then there was a CPR class for. Uh, San Juan Batista employees and, and our school employees.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, I had a question now.
Okay.
The, sorry, the CPR class, we talked about that at the, um.
Fire advisory committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Um, and, uh, uh, Fire Marshal Chief Bedola. Bedola said that anybody could come. Is that a thing?
Yeah, generally, um, and that's all handled through prevention. It all depends on how they're setting up the classes. They will do classes specific for a group. Or they can do classes that are open to the public. It just all depends on how it gets set up.
Okay. And do you know how many people attended on the one here?
I believe it was eighteen people.
That's a nice.
It was all the city employees and a couple from the school district.
Great.
Okay.
And thanks to Roy also for.
It was gonna trickle down a little bit.
We just went black.
Went black.
Welcome back.
See ya. Thanks, chief. Be safe.
Let's wait for it to.
Good evening. So here's, uh, my report for the month. So in regards to the sheriff's office, they did have a DUI accident. That's what you were talking about. So that one happened on North Street. Motorcycle rider struck a parked vehicle. The motorcycle rider fled the scene. He was later located and determined to be under the influence, so they arrested him for DUI. I don't have much more information. I have not received a copy of that report.
Well, I will add it happened at one oh four AM, woke me up. Okay, and, um, the motorcycle ran the stop sign at the corner of Second and North. For those of you who don't know or know, it's a T intersection. So it's, uh. And he ran the stop sign and kept going straight across the street into the driveway and. The driveway was parked at Toyota Tacoma truck. And hit the back of the truck and the truck is all tended in on the back. I, and the bed is all screwed up. And threw the truck into the garage door, the metal garage door. Was the, was the sound of the metal door crunching that I think woke me up. That made a heck of a noise. Anyway, um, we went out about, well, a couple of minutes later, we got clothes on and stuff and.
Thanks goodness. We did, uh.
We didn't find him, but, but. He did about an hour later, he was running down one twenty-nine or whatever, you know, First Street, yeah.
So we did end up, uh, working with the sheriff's office. We had a couple reports of a person that was driving an unmarked old. Police vehicle looking Crown Victoria. It was hanging out at the Valero Gas Station on that area. He was also cruising. At the cemetery at night. So we got a couple of those reports. So we coordinated with the sheriff's office to investigate that case. Uh, there was a report that he had approached a female at a park bench here in the city, offered her a ride. There were no criminal, um. Intent in that case, they couldn't make a, a criminal case. They did contact him outside the city of Hollister. It was Hollister. They did contact him outside the city of Hollister. It was Hollister Police Department, Sheriff's Office. They stopped him. They identified him. He's an out-of-county resident. He was told not to return to this county or ever operate as any type of security type of position within the city. And Valero Gas Station was also contacted and told them basically what, what was going on. So in case they ever tried to hire him back or any of that, he was not licensed in our city also to be any type of security guard. So that was handled in that, that fashion. They did have one criminal, criminal threats case involving two males, one juvenile involuntary mental health hold. And then the DUI crash, fire department, you heard from code enforcement. So again, we, we continue to be busy. We're kind of in a, in a in a holding pattern because we've issued citations and we've issued notices. And now we're just kind of on that holding pattern. But we do have seventeen cases open. We did address a sign ordinance that was brought up last month of a sign at a residential neighborhood. I don't know if some of you have passed by that, but the, the sign was taken down. It was a private business and they are going to be in compliant with the city ordinance. It's going to be a smaller sign, which is actually covered in our municipal code. So that we've taken care of that. We've also contacted a local business about a sign on a rooftop. So we're just kind of waiting to hear back from that one. So we are following up on that as well. Four new code cases that included Blythe Properties and someone living in an RV. That was taken care of. The RV ended up moving along. It was close to private property. Food truck noticed to obtain temporary user permit, seven to hours per week. We had discussed that at the last meeting as well. So that's a planning issue and they're, and planning for leaf is actually dealing with that. The notices have been sent out. The owner of the taco truck actually came down. We met with him. Everything was explained to him in Spanish and in English. So I was able to sit down with them, explain the letter that he received and he's been in contact with four leaf. So that's, that's really good. And then we issued two stop notices, worked on a couple abandoned vehicles. We did issue the notice for abandoned vehicles on our social media. That was successful. And then we also had mailers in the monthly water bill that everybody gets in this town, obviously. So they got that mailer. There were a couple of concerns about seven to two hour notices that some people say they did not receive and their vehicles were towed. The sheriff's office is dealing with that portion. So there's, in case you hear about that, we are dealing with that. Again, we continue to be proactive. And that's that for code enforcement. And then I, I also included in my presentation, the special event permit update. So this is, we've been staying busy with this. I've, I've been working with Caitlin on this one just because of the safety, public safety portion of it. I'm very concerned with it. So she has done a lot of work. I've added a couple of slides. The ones that I really liked that she's included in her template is the map of the city, which is going to be extremely friendly for people to use when they're updating or applying for a special event permit within the city. They could actually drag and drop cones, barricades. And if you don't, if you're not that tech savvy, you could also print the map and write stuff in. So I know, I know that was a concern. So I did talk to Caitlin about that, but it is a general map of downtown, which is something we needed because everybody turns in their own maps and sometimes they're hard to make out. It's hard to read everybody's different writing or their drawings. So this is very, very helpful. So I just wanted to point that out. She's done great work. We continue to work on the special event permits. Some future events promoters have contacted me, like the Rip Cook Off, and just asked if they can secure their dates. And I said they could, but there was a new special event permit that they'd need to add nearby in the near future with different costs and stuff like that. So those events will continue, but now there's going to be a new special event permit that they have to complete. You can switch. And then I want to give a flock of, it's been a bit since I've given one of these. So deputies have been trained and used in the flock system. They love it. I try to include every single deputy that works investigations, that works patrol. I also noted the CHP looks at our flock system a lot. So I shared our flock system with the surrounding jurisdictions. The reason for that is sometimes they issue stolen vehicles or be on the lookout for different vehicles. That information can be entered into our flock system. And then if a deputy's cruising around within our city, they get the immediate notice. So it's Hollister, Watsonville, Morgan Hill, Gilroy, City Salinas, Monterey County, that's on the, literally on the other side. They also have a flock system. So every single flock system is tied in into a tight network and everybody has access on their phones. So it, it's so far, it's positive. I check it every day and I noticed that the biggest users, the California Highway Patrol, they're on there every single hour, which is, it's, it's good. It's a good thing. What's that? Oh yeah, they, they can check. So I can see if there's lots of PDs looking at it. I can see who's actually looking at our system, which has been really nice. And then I had numbers. And, and I continue to work with additional, for additional cameras, which is kind of on standby for that. I'm just waiting for a, an, a new quote. So this is kind of an insight for the flock system. So you see the vehicle reads. So it's over two hundred and eighty-two thousand reads. Since we've had the system, that's pretty good. And I, and I can break it down by camera. I can break it down by location. I can break it down. I'll give you an example. The roundabout, when they're destroying that roundabout, I can type in, this how specific I can get. I, I just type in semi. And it'll give me every single semi that's come through that roundabout. So it's been awesome. And then identify the plate and then we can go after the, you know, the person that's destroying that roundabout. Since I've been looking, I haven't caught one yet, which is the bad part, right? But I am gonna place another camera there similar to the one we have here, where I can just go back in time and, and actually look at video of them driving through the air and destroying that. So then we can follow up with fines and citations. And then there's been forty-six searches, meaning that any agency or myself or CHP Sheriff's Office can go into our system and search to see if a certain suspect has been cruising through our town. So I think it's, it's a pretty good system and it's, and it continues to work out for us. Any questions?
Yeah, John, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Would the flock system be able to follow the gentleman you were talking about who's driving the goofy car that looked like a patrol car? You know what I mean? And I did see that up at the cemetery a couple of times while I was walking my dog. And he never bothers me because Nico's pretty big and people don't mess. But so can we like zoom in on him if he's ever back or you know what I mean?
Yeah, you do. So there is a, a search function on there and you type in what you're looking for. And you type in a date range and it'll search for that vehicle, description of the vehicle, and it goes down even to bikes. That's how nice the system is. So yeah, golf carts. I can search for golf carts. I know that was an issue a couple of months back. The golf carts that are speeding downtown, I can search for them as well. Yes, the go-karts, yes, go-karts. So it's, it's a great system.
Your home scooter. Any questions?
Was, was the flock used for the DUI to find the guy?
I did not ask the sheriff's office.
Okay. And then I have another question for you, not. So that's great information. So this, I don't know. You're up here. Someone asked you this question. Do you keep track of the online residents that move into the area that have a record for past child abuse or sexual assault?
I do not.
Is there any intention to maybe get hooked up with that or a small town? Anyone, could you just throw a rock and you're like, I'm by the school? Because my husband often just looks at different things and he said, oh, there's a new one that moved over at Copper Leaf. I said, okay, is there a picture of this person? No picture. Is that kosher? They don't have pictures now?
I have not looked at Megan's Law or anything related to Megan's Law and since I worked for the sheriff's office and I was in investigations many, many moons ago. But I can ask our local sheriff's office if they're paying attention to that. Maybe they have a map or
I'm just wondering if our city, if that would be something in your purview and the department to start maybe including that just to keep an eye out, you know, and I'm just finding that that's really negligent that there isn't a photo. And this is like a new person moving into the community with a Ludacris with a child under fourteen.
I'll, I'll ask the sheriff's office for that.
Thank you.
Information, of course.
Thanks. I think we talked about this a couple of months ago. Aptos has blocked too, don't they? Not Aptos, but Capitola.
Capitola does as well.
And they caught a double homicide.
Yes.
Via the flock camera, yes. Vehicular homicide, I think it was.
I don't remember what.
Yeah, it was, it was a bad guy. So when, when you're getting it up and running and showing me on the screen, I was like, oh, that's right. Capitola just popped somebody. Great, Chris. And thank you. I think, looks like we have a Zoom participant. Carl, you're up.
Thank you. Just very briefly regarding the rooftop sign. The, that was at the window shopping center. And I just want to raise some background about that shopping center. When it was under development, there were conditions of approval. And one of those conditions of approval was there be a uniform sign program for all of the businesses within that complex. So I just wanted to throw that out there. You know, something else to look at possibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't look like we have any hands in the audience, so. I'll finish with Roy, guys. Thanks, Roy. Appreciate it. Done. Is the chief here for Charlie's presentation or?
No, he's here for the RFP.
For the RFP, okay, that's right. Okay.
There you help me, right?
Yeah, I know. That was great. Public safety, anything from the, do we have anything, buddy from the sheriff's department? Doesn't look like it. Okay, okay. Okay, moving right along. It's like we're at the consent agenda.
I have a few slides.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, Tom. Most of the time you go first and
Do you have any questions on the slides? We'll just cut to the
Ready, go.
Okay, we have six candidates for associate planner. It closed last Friday and we're going to be screening those and setting up interviews within the next couple of weeks. Then we have to figure out where they're going to sit. So this is going to work on that while I'm out of town. It's a full-time position. It will reduce the four-leaf contract costs so that there'll be a balance. I don't know if there'll be a savings the first year. But I hope there's a savings in the long run, especially as they are trained by our four-leaf staff and, and supported. They'll help with our planning commission, of course, HRB permitting for preservation, economic strategies with Third Street and current planning and public services. They'll work the front counter. So if someone comes in with a general question about a property or Realtor or whomever, we'll have someone here on staff that can respond to that. So that's the nature of that one. We are in, in the midst of a sales tax analysis. About three weeks ago, we received access from the California Department of Finance and Taxes to all of our sales tax data. And it goes right down to the month, to the business, to the amount submitted. So we'll be able to look at those statistics and evaluate trends and, and verify downward trends, especially if we have a downward trend and then we have data to back that up. We also know who our number one sales tax generators are. And I think it's pretty obvious. Obviously, our biggest store is our biggest generator as well as Valero. And, and I had to learn how to use Access Database. That was fun, but at least now I can read the data and share it with Wendy. So Wendy and I can do these analyses together. And I just wanted to share that because if, if we do need to consider a sales tax initiative and increasing our revenue with a sales tax initiative, we have to have a basic understanding of, of the nature of where our sales tax comes from. So we have that ability now and we're able to move forward with, with good data. The, the SOI UGB Committee has actually done some hard work in the past month, including a meeting tomorrow night. I worked with a member of the committee last week and submitted a draft language for a new to consider a software language, I'll say, in, in an MOU with the county. And that software language includes support and approve, approve with conditions versus approve or deny. We, we've eliminated that language entirely from, from the proposed agreement. And working with Commissioner De Vries, you know, I met again Monday morning. And from that, we generated a new third draft that we hope to present tomorrow and maybe come to some consensus with the committee. They are very anxious to, to end their review of this and, and get something back to the council, certainly in October, November. So we talked about area of concern versus planning area and, and decreasing the size of the area. The, the blue areas were several parcels on the extreme, extreme perimeter. So we're going to stick with planning area and get rid of the no-tier strategy. So, so that way we go back to a simpler, straightforward approach. So so that's good progress. I wanted to share with the council and thank you to, to Commissioner Dan De Vries for, for stepping up. Importing of water, I don't know if I've shared this before, but we are changing gears and our engineering firm is now going to be designing the pipeline. I talked to them twice in the past week about giving a proposal to us sooner than later. We have included the conduit that Councilmember Freeman referred to for the, for the, for the fiber. We're amending the pipeline agreement to include district services for Hollister at, at Union Road. And then we'll give that to the council for approval this November. We still need to work on the Hollister Urban Area Agreement that Holly Kennedy referenced from the, from the Water District that'll solidify the amount that the city will be paying to buy water from the district. We've also had some conversations about implementing the microbe system and we're looking for Bureau of Recreation Grant to bring that on board as part of our fifteen million dollar pipeline agreement. So we've had a couple of meetings, most recently last Thursday, with possible with Cal, California Consulting Grant Writers and with the microbe team. Funding applications for the fifteen million dollar project. We have the Congresswoman Lofgren sponsored support, which was submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers for ten million dollars. And, but it still will require a budget appropriations bill. So if that money is approved, it becomes available next spring. So it takes a long time to put these funding programs together, but I know with Ridge Line's help, Dimitri Semenov's help, what we'll get to the, the full funding of the water program and try and keep our rates as low as we can. We've already been approved for the EPA STAG grant, the same grant that we got when Panetta was representing us. So we're having good success working to fund our water project. On the wastewater, the August status report is that the, the pipeline is completed. And we have our agreement in place for the county to pave over the, the roads. We are wrapping up some, a few items along Freitas Road. And we're also working on the connection there at the Hollister Plant. And soon we'll be working on the lift station in, in, on Third Street. The cost estimates for the plant operation are, are part of the biggest part of the project because there'll be some savings and we want to identify what the operation costs are so we can better understand our debt service. The fine status is frustrating for me and, and I think for all the city where we were alerted in May that we had a potential two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fines that had accumulated. The city operator had stated in May that the allegations were false and that he could work things out. But then again, in July, the water board came back and reassured in the same violations. So still to date, since May, I don't have anything in writing to substantiate those fines, but that's a big deal. We are working with Downey Brand already because they are working with us on the water agreements. And so I, if, if necessary, we'll bring them to bat for us again, the way they defended the city so well in twenty twenty-two. So I didn't want to over, didn't want to cruise past that. Fire Services is later in this agenda. There have been some lengthy conversations at the three CE, both Policy Board and Governance Board conversations where their, their operations, their, their boards have grown to nineteen members because they've grown so big. So there was consideration of reducing that to a smaller number of eleven. And that debate got pretty wild and so they kind of backed off at least until maybe the first of the year. Is that, is that a good way? John, John's been part of that on the policy board and I've been on the operations board.
That's correct. It's been, it's controversial subject because it's community power and we're supposed to have community input. And yet certain people want to reduce the board, which reduces input kind of counter to the original JPA agreement. And so it's very controversial of people, other city councils have had special meetings that lasted more than an hour on this one subject and it's very near and dear to their hearts. And we kicked the can down the road, which is probably the right thing to do because they were moving too fast.
And and as proposed, right now, the current status is San Benito County is represented. And Hollister and San Juan Batista alternate every couple of years. So this is my second round. And then in January would be Hollister representing us again. What is proposed to reduce is no permanent seats for San Benito County at all, neither city nor the county. And that we would have to work with either the larger cities or in another, you know, we'd have to be represented in a different way. So so that reduction would exclude us. And that's why I wanted to bring it to the council detention because it's a critical matter. The San Benito Health Foundation is going to have their mobile health van out in front of Windmill on the sixteenth of October. Casa Rosa, today I assigned and Liz notarized their affordable housing agreement, which is one of the last steps towards occupancy at Casa Rosa. So I wanted to celebrate, it'll be. Been five years since I've been here that we we're going to get that that project occupied. So that's for me, anyway, that's a big deal.
No, it's great because we're getting our medium, medium income. Finished, yeah.
Security, right. It's going to help meet our, exactly. It's good all around. The gas station is moving forward. They they are working towards their building permit. So I've seen action from Four Leaf on that side. Recreation and I were working on a T-Mobile grant application for fifty thousand dollars. The purpose of that grant is to bring community together. And we were looking at possibly the amphitheater that's proposed for Luck Park adjacent to the library. But that grant is due in just a couple of weeks, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to get there from here. So we're going to keep working on that grant. I did get outreach from a community member representing the the Destination Salinas. Business Association. And I explained to them that that we had our eyes on something for that grant and that we're moving forward in a little different direction. But it's a whole, it's a neat grant because it it uses someone like Caitlin Caitlin and her abilities to help bring community together. So so I hope we get a shot at that next year. And then the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant Application is a three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant focused on pedestrian mobility improvements. And I and I shot you a brief picture of what Second Street would look like. We have letters of support from the Arch Diocese and the State Historic Park to improve these crosswalks. And do a little bit of sidewalk sidewalk work. And then the the ADA path of travel is compressed, decomposed granite. Is to make improvements where we have the highest number of pedestrians in our city. That was the focus for this one. So that's why it's all pedestrian oriented. And I wanted to share this map in case the council has any concerns or questions about it. I have a couple of slides from recreation. Last weekend was a huge success. Approximately eighty neighbors came out, plus seven canine neighbors. People love the community field event. Steve Harrison, the Dead Cowboys. We had six, six bands, I believe, just from San Juan Batista. I didn't know that there was so much music in this community. And and it was just really cool to have sixty people standing in the street. I just was really proud for Caitlin and her hard work. That's an annual event that happened nationally, and she's definitely going to bring it back a year from now. And then the Anzar Fall Festival is coming up. Anzar High School is on ten twenty-one. And she discovered these water balloon, that aren't water balloons, they're reusable cotton balloons. So they work like water balloons, but you can reuse them and they don't get stuck in our storm drain. So she's looking forward, looking forward to having fun with the high school at the Fall Festival, helping us stay well connected with the with. With the with the school district and continue to work with our special event organizers, as Roy's already elaborated on. Because we have several events coming up, I'll just pause for a second. We have a new Veterans Parade being planned for Veterans Day. Which is really great to the the Veterans Hall. We also have the parade of lights that we're working on. And then we have the bells for 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 glad tidings. Those are all on the calendar. We're not quite clear yet, Roy, on on the Harvest Festival. That that application is due on Friday and it's and it's not still incomplete, right? So last year we had a harvest festival. This year, we're not sure we're going to have one, but fingers crossed. Okay. Working with the. Working on partnering with Anzar Associated Student Body to develop programming for teens. Working on with the Youth Alliance and and all these other organizations, finally beginning to develop sports programs. AYSO is the soccer organization, if you're unfamiliar, trying to bring sports and activities for both teens and for for little kids. So she's starting to spread her wings a little bit in her full-time capacity. Working with Gilway Rack to develop practices and systems for a modern youth commission. So our youth commission is defined in our mini code. It came from our strategic planning committee, right? And so she she's working, she's looking at that that's on her radar to to bring that back. And then programming, of course, for our holidays and for the winter. Trying to find a way to get a bonfire back here, but we can't find a piece of real estate to put the bonfire on, so. And we're going to run in places. Yes, we're going to have a little foil with orange lights on it.
And since he's across the street, he'll 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 hear about it and he'll get mad at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's where your offices.
They'll get over it.
And and then just a a brief overview on our library in both Spanish and English. Thank you, Rochelle. She couldn't be here tonight. These are our hours from eleven to six Monday through Friday and eleven to two on Saturday. And then there'll be a resource pop up from. From Public Health, County Public Health, September twelfth. And then a voter education tabling workshop there at the library, September nineteenth. So these fires are available and they're being distributed now. So if the community has any questions, I'd be happy to to answer them.
Wow, thank you. John, anything?
Uh, no questions. Thank you. Great report. I love all the things happening with the Recreation Department.
Thank you. If, when we have the planning person in, would they not take the chair of Four Leaf?
Yes, but I think that should be a transition, a transition. Because we're in the midst of several projects. We're revising our sign ordinance. We're revising our food truck ordinance. And so there needs to be a transition. Can't just be dropped in.
Okay. You talked about the sales tax and looking at downward trends. What are we going to do with that data?
That's going to be data to help justify economic development programs and hopefully stimulate some state interests. If we can demonstrate factually that that we need the help, then then we can better apply it for grants. That would go hopefully directly to our our business owners in downtown, but we need the data to support those applications.
Awesome.
And Associate Planner would be helping again with economic development.
Oh, good. Cool. Thank you. H U A, sorry, acronym.
That's the Hollister Urban Area. That's the the name of the twenty thirteen agreement, where Sunny Slope, Hollister and San Benito Watershed.
And then, I know, I didn't know one. EPA Stag. Grant, S D A G.
I have no idea what Stag stands for. It's been a year and a half since we got the.
Okay.
EPA is Environmental Protection Agency.
The wastewater is a little disconcerting. Three C E hugely disconcerting for a program that we actually had to opt out of. We were automatically included in it. And I'm so not happy. If you could please pass that along to them, I would very much appreciate it. Leslie's not happy. Big deal.
Can I ask why? What 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 do they do to obsess here, other than sell electricity?
When we're not going to be included any longer as a county, that's still a little disconcerting. And then gas is moving forward this past week towards a building permit. That's awesome. So we're moving with the. Right-hand turn lane?
Yes, it's been approved by Caltrans.
Super cool.
We're we're actually midway through the right-of-way acquisition and having to go through eminent domain for that.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you. And then the map. It has the. As you're going up Washington towards Second, it's got the right side with a sidewalk, but not the left where all the angle parking is.
Right, that angle parking is a bit tricky because it's on dirt, right?
All the way up to the wall.
You wouldn't have liked the first map. It was removing the pepper tree at the bottom of the hill. So so I asked him just not to touch it, and the project would get done faster.
Okay, okay.
Honestly.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Dawn. Just, I think I had some similar questions to Leslie, but I'm going to maybe ask a little bit more to it. The first one is with the Associate Planner, your recruitment closed last Friday. Of the six candidates, can you speak just briefly on maybe what they're bringing to potential hiring?
Uh, Associate Planner is a mid-level position. It's not a journey level. So they come with the ability to become familiar with our complicated community development codes. And be able to respond to citizen inquiries at the front counter on an as-needed basis. So as they walk in for a sign permit or a type of simple over-the-counter permit, they'll be able to receive that on the same day. They'll be able to go out on site and do inspections and support code enforcement in that way. So I know Roy is really happy that we're bringing the planning staff on board to support him in the code enforcement efforts. And they would also then be working with the building official and then they'd be working as a team. So the current planning efforts involve some of the processes, including HRB. So every time an applicant comes in, we research our inventory to see if they're on our HRB list. Right now, the permit technician is doing that, and that would be the job of the Associate Planner. And then compliance with our Historic Resources Board, I think you brought to us to our attention. A couple of properties where homeowners went out on the weekends and started changing the façades on their on their. Houses, and they just bought them and didn't understand the rules. So they're going to be public information and compliance in that regard. And then we are working on the revisions to our zoning code and and helping with our housing elements and and our general plan amendments. Also, as needed, would support the 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 CAP, the Climate Action Plan.
Okay, and then on one of the new job duties here, I see that. You're going to have them work with economic strategies to include Third Street. I would think that that's like the main goal. Is that, that's kind of.
It could be, it could be.
Okay, so they would engage with the business owners. And then Leslie asked about this, so hiring a full-time person, reducing the contract with Four Leaf. Would that be a savings in the first year? And are you looking at like an approximate dollar amount? That we would be saving with that contract?
We budgeted for a eight to twelve months on Four Leaf and and only six months on the planner, so. But we did budget for some overlap. I think it's important that we have overlap for continuity.
Okay, so then we might not be getting a savings in the beginning.
Not this fiscal year, but certainly next fiscal year.
Hopefully, it won't be too much. But anyway, the next thing about the initial talk about an increase in sales tax. So this is citywide sales tax. What increment are you thinking of going up to? Or is that based on the final study results or data?
That's that's due in part on the final studies to see what our liabilities are. I think if the fire department, you know, the former city manager. Wrote a four-page essay to the new city manager in twenty nineteen saying, we're getting a sweet deal on fire. And so to honor Ed Tewes' wisdom, he saw this coming. And I think that if the sheriff were to be successful filling all of their vacancies, there also might be similar questions coming from the sheriff. So I think it's inevitable that the city will face a sales tax increase. And we'll have to make a decision. We have a choice of going as high as fifty cents on our sales tax. But it's estimated at this time, when we worked with Citygate earlier in the spring, that a twenty-five cent sales tax increase. Would would help us out with two hundred fifty thousand a year. So right now, and you'll see in the terms and conditions that are provided in the action item tonight. Right off the bat, Hollister Fire is looking for a hundred and fifty, just to incrementally get back in line with their agreement. So that's a hundred thousand more than our operations budget could afford this year. So we're going to need to look at revenue. Revenue sources in the near future.
Yeah, it's a double double-edged sword because when we talked about economic strategies, we know that the downtown merchants are suffering. You know, we've heard that they're, you know, one of the planning commissioners was. You know, urging us to have a discussion, which we didn't. So I'm just wondering how that increase in sales tax is going to affect the small businesses if they have to increase that on their costs. And when they already have, you know, very low numbers, there's a lot of issues, but I'm just wondering how it's going to overall affect. Our community with our, you know, our businesses. You know, I look at that, it's, there's two sides, three sides to everything.
Well, I agree with you. It'll be a data-driven decision. We won't go forward without data and outreach.
Yeah, because my my.
Campaign.
My thinking is that we go ahead right now and just really do our due diligence and be very proactive like Mr. Morales has been. And do an audit on our businesses downtown and find out who is cash-only, who is using personal cell accounts. Who is underreporting? Look at the trends. Look at what is going down on Third Street. We know who is busy. We know who is not. And if their addicts don't pass the sniff test, then we need to really deal with that. Because I think we're losing out on a lot of income. You know, we are a friendly town. We're a small town, but we're a dying town. And I think that there's some. Some, you know, situations where they're not. They're not abiding by the rules. And I think the city is, you know, we need to follow up on that. Thank you.
Sure. Just a couple of quick ones. The the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar fine on water. Is that the same? Regional Water Resource Board that hammered us last time?
It is, yes.
Can't they just go away?
I agree. So when they don't call, I don't, I just leave them alone then.
Okay, that's good.
I'm still working on solutions.
Yeah, so I'm happy to hear about the Associate Planner, even if we break even next year. Just the grief of dealing with Four Leaf is going to go away. And I can, I can give you a good example. Some of our neighbors in our HOA. Were in a condo and the homeowners association. In November deemed their deck and their walkway as having to be replaced. So they started the process in January between the, between our somewhat inept management company and Four Leaf. They still haven't got those decks built. And I heard Four Leaf admit yesterday that it kind of slipped through the cracks. Apparently, there was a transition in one of our, one of the employees went on baby leave or something and then.
Yeah, that is one of our problems.
I I've heard this before too with Four Leaf, so. I probably share a lot of consent, concern.
We've had probably half a dozen permit technicians in the past eight to nine months.
Yes, they're really not taking us very serious, you know, they're on. So you already hit the kind of the sales tax. I have, I I agree with you on, especially our. Our street fairs and stuff. Is everybody really truly reporting what they're selling? I don't know. I I don't know how you would, I don't know how you do that.
We do have a way, especially for 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 the rib cook-off and Arts and Crafts Festival. He's required to get a sales permit. Forms completed by each of his, each of his vendors. And we know how many vendors he has, so.
Okay.
So so we can, we can account for it on the front end and then verify and validate on the back end.
You mentioned. The moving forward with some, you know. Some of the activities of the soccer. I spoke to, of course, his name just left me. One of the gentlemen that was running our new little soccer club in town. The gals went on to win two more championships. And now there's a boys league starting. So we are getting a generation of that, which would be nice to maybe mix in with them, or we can help them, you know, type of thing.
Yeah.
This is pretty, he says, yeah, he says, believe it or not, a little San Juan Batista is starting to be talked about in San Jose. That's that's pretty good to hear. So. And last but not least, music in the porch. I attended a couple of the of the gigs and then spoke to Steve. Harris the next day, because we went out to Harvest Time and they played out there. And he said it's one of the best times he's had in a long time. I haven't heard anything negative about it. So that was a good, good show. So hopefully next year it'll be. And we do have that many musicians in this town. It's it's pretty, it's pretty impressive.
And and they, and the community rallied around that. Didn't cost much money, just an outreach. It was real simple.
Yeah, Steve said it was one of the easiest things he's ever planned. And he said, you know, and he had. Of course, I just forgot her name. Caitlin's help. He goes Caitlin was, you know, wonderful. And he said it just went great. So that's good. So that's good. He said next year they're talking, maybe hitting the porches and maybe having like the grand finale somewhere. You know, maybe they all get together and play. Yeah, yeah, like, yeah. Yeah, let's get the power upgraded out there. So we do something like that.
Like the Beatles at, at Kell's, yeah.
Sorry. He's mentioned, he's mentioned, might, it might pop for worse bands in the world, but. Yeah, yeah, you can't say, okay. And that's it, and looks like we might have somebody out into Zoom land? Oh, EJ. No, I didn't. I went to him. He said he didn't have anything, right? Yeah, that's distinct, okay, Cara, Cara, you're up? Oh, she's muted. There she is.
Thank you. No, thank you. It's me again. I have a question about the ADA pedestrian improvement ramps. But the ones at Polk and Fifth, and those are going to be on your consent agenda? And I had a question whether those ramps are going to have the tactile bumps for?
It, it is going to be on our consent, so you can pull the consent item if you would like, and then we'll discuss that.
Our engineering firm is on board for that, yes.
You can ask whatever question you have at that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Wait then, thank you.
Michael, you have three minutes?
Okay, yeah, I just want to ask city manager if there has been any improvement or news on the multi-agency chloride permit limit for the city of Hollister? The process that they, he was talking about trying to get that chloride limit changed. Thank you.
I have concepts of a plan. I'm not president right now.
It sounds like, sounds like a Pink Floyd, you know?
Yeah.
Sorry. No, Michael, I'm afraid I haven't had a chance to do that. I've been focusing on a design proposal for the water project. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get back to that.
Okay.
That's okay.
Nobody in the audience?
No.
Okay, so now we can move on to the consent. You want a break? Yeah? Five-minute break? You guys want one? Yeah, take, okay, we'll take five minutes. Take five. All right, we're at the consent, but Liz, let's see, the D and E, those are tabled. Do we, we're going to take any action on them? We just table them?
Yes.
Okay. So does anybody want to pull A, B, or C? Just throw it out there. No? No? Dawn, do you want to pull it? I'm going to pull C, yeah, just real quick, just a visual on it. And then, yeah, yeah. You're rubbing off on me. Liz, we have a, looks like public comment.
Yes, she's for C.
For C, okay. Okay, Cara, we pulled C, so. Do we have a motion to approve A and B?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item A and B.
Second.
Calling the question for consent items A and B, Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Mayor Prochette Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Frios.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The reason I pulled C, I was just hoping to show, I was hoping to have a little more of an audience, but the map I think is in question, just so we can get a better idea with what we're looking at as far as their, the ADA ramps.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And in response to that, I invited Jerry to join us tonight from MNS Engineering.
Okay.
And he's got a couple of slides to share.
Good evening, Council. Jerry Sangue from MNS, as Dawn stated, I'll really quickly, I'm going to share my screen. So as discussed, can you guys see that?
No.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
No.
Nope.
So you're looking for fly balls?
Liz and I. One moment.
You see the show at the bottom? There you go.
Yeah, there, there it is. Yeah, it was, it was sticking for some reason. So the current location for the curb ramps that are planned are to basically finish off Fifth and Polk as it relates to a complete intersection. So you'll see the four locations identified. As, as you may recall, we paved the, a sec-segment of Fifth Street that it was adjacent to Abbey Park. And in doing so, we placed curb ramps on both corners, the corner of Fifth and Mukulemi, as well as Fifth and Polk. So the plan was to be contiguous with this grant money that we had to the tune of about $68,000 and complete these ramps here. So in doing so, we'd be removing the raised curbs on the corners, on the, the three, the three ramps on Fifth and Polk, as well as re- addressing the, the curb ramp, because right now at, at the, excuse me, at the, the, I forget his name now, I'm sorry. At, at, at the, the business at the corner of Fifth and Mukulemi, the, it, it's, it's in dire need of a curb ramp and a bollard to protect with that, with that business being revitalized to protect pedestrian traffic. So those are the locations that we, we decided would be the best as far as human traffic, child traffic, weekend traffic and such. We put it out to bid, let me give you another screen here, go back. So we, we received, we put it out to bid, we received four bidders. Liz and I received the bidders live. And these were the, the results of that bid, the bid tab. So as you'll see, oops, there it is. Sorry, let me move this. So four, four bids went out, we had four respondents, Goals Construction, Monterey Peninsula Engineering, Kramer Engineering, and F Laduka Company. The engineer's estimate was anywhere between 58,000 and 67,670. As you can see by the bid tabs and the breakdown, the lowest qualified bidder was Kramer, who was actually $680 more.
I'm sorry, Jerry, can I, real, real quick, the, the screen didn't switch over to the.
Oh, it did. Hold on, hold on.
You have to stop sharing first, yeah.
Yeah, I did. Let me, let me see. Can you see that now?
There you go.
There you go. I'm sorry, my computer's glitching a little bit. So I'll reiterate, the engineer's original estimate was anywhere from 58,000 to 67,670. We have Goals Construction, Monterey Peninsula Engineering, Kramer Engineering Incorporated, and F Laduka Company. As you can see by the bid tabs and the seven items, Kramer Engineering came in at the, with the lowest qualified bid. It was only $680 more than the engineer's estimate. Everyone else was far and away much more expensive than that. So this is, so we've, you know, obviously gone, we're going to go with Kramer Engineering. And we recommend that the board go ahead and approve that. And that's in your bid packet with my, with my engineer staff report.
Okay, thank you. The reason I asked for it, I just wanted folks to see where those, I think there was a little confusion where the ramps were going to go. But it makes sense because of the ballpark is busy, those intersections are used, and then with the market coming online. The traffic, yeah. And it was a, so just so you see, it's, it's a very small project, but it's still almost $70,000. So that's kind of the price of doing business today, you know? There are people on social media like, well, you paved seven streets, why don't you just pave them all? Well, that's a lot of money, you know, so people just kind of need to see how much it costs. So that's, that's all I have on that. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, Cara, yeah.
Can, can I just ask the council a question if that's okay? Because it's come up in the past, and this may actually answer Cara's question. Caltrans standards, which is what most municipalities typically follow when they're building, reconstructing streets or doing curb ramps and sidewalk repair, typically uses the truncated domes, the tactile domes that she referred to. And they're typically yellow. Yellow is the standard, and Caltrans doesn't like to veer from that standard. But I know that I have had several conversations with Cara at where she's recommended that we go back to a slate gray or a dark gray that kind of matches the history of, of the town. And I wanted to just put it in front of the council because really the council should decide which way we want to go with that. There are exceptions, as I mentioned, and I, and I can name a few. Burlingame Avenue, when Burlingame Avenue, downtown Burlingame was redone up here in the peninsula, they went with a slate gray as Cara's recommended. I've also seen like a, a red roof red, almost like a tile red in certain, certain municipalities to kind of match the decor and the design of, of, of the roadway that they've created. So I just wanted to put that out there, and that may, I may be answering Cara's question, or at least voicing it on her behalf. But I wanted to run it by, by the council because I do believe that the council should ultimately decide which way we go with that. And.
And Jerry, you have some existing truncated domes across the street from, from some of these?
Correct.
Could you show the aerial again and show us where those are?
Absolutely, absolutely. Let me just, let me switch screens here. On the curb ramp location. So. So here at the corner of Polk and, and Fifth, behind the, the backstop for the baseball field, as, as, as mentioned previously, when we redid Fifth Street, we also added, if you guys recall, there were some areas where this, this sidewalk path of travel that a butt's Abbey Park was not contiguous. There was actually dirt, and so we created a complete sidewalk for that area. We were also, it also triggered, that work also triggered creating curb ramps, ADA compliant curb ramps with truncated domes. So the corners of Abbey, of Fifth and Polk, and the, the one that's across from the market at Fifth and Mukulemi have yellow truncated domes at this time. So just food for thought as it relates to if we're going to make a decision on how we want to do this moving forward.
Okay, thank you. She, you're up, Cara.
Oh, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. Yes, we've had conversations for, with Mr. Sanguenetti on these tactile domes. I did quite a bit of research on it, and the whole idea behind these bumps at the crosswalks is so they're tactile. They're not, I know that they're for people with low vision or who are blind, but the whole idea, concept behind them is that they feel it with their feet. It's not something that they actually look at. And Mr. Sanguenetti did mention Burlingame, that was going to be an example that I was going to give to you. Not, and, and these, they, they use gray, they're very beautiful. Also, if you've been to Asilamar, they use tan ones. They have all kinds of ways all over the place, and they use the tan that blends in with their walkways. And these are not plastic. They are pavers that have the little bumps, you know, built into them. So they're pavers, plastic, and if you look at our, the plastic stuff that's around, you know, it's already curling up and they're actually in some places becoming hazardous. So, you know, we bill ourselves as to be a beautiful historic town. The tan or gray is so much more aesthetic. It's not required that they be yellow, even if Caltrans prefers it. It's not required. And, you know, all of these little details add up, add up in our town. So I urge you, as a condition of this contract, that you have to make them gray and that they be pavers. And maybe we can even get rid of the yellow because I just removed that, those ugly plastic yellow things removed from our entire town. Thank you for.
Thank you. Any more questions? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Yeah.
Of course. We recently got quotes in, in our home to do some more concrete work. The cost of doing, doing pavers, just the labor and the, the materials was nearly 10x the, the, the concrete. And if we're trying to be cost-conscious on this, especially without undoing work that was already done unless it needs repaired, it doesn't seem prudent to, to go that direction. It's just my thing.
Yep, I agree. Anything else?
I, I agree too, and I'm a huge proponent of pavers. Well, yeah, I'd love to see the whole city in permeable pavers. But, yeah, no, I, I don't have anything else. I'd like to see the gray. But um y- yeah, no, I I don't have anything else. I'd like to see the gray as opposed to the yellow, though.
Yeah, me too.
I believe that uh the the gray or the tan, whichever. Uh can be acquired, the plastic overlay can be acquired, it doesn't have to be a favor to be that color. And I I also would be in favor of the tan or gray i- 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 in a plastic overlay over the concrete.
Good. Same, okay. What do you think, tan or gray? Gray? Yeah, I know, I know. Did you take your medicine today? So, okay.
So we need a motion on that?
Motion on that, please.
Uh I make a motion to approve consent agenda. Agenda C, awarding the contract for the citywide ADA improvement project, CIP twenty three oh one, using uh. Gray as opposed to the yellow.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Protip Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Freos?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, action item. Fire advisory advisory committee update. I'm not gonna say all the rest, go ahead. Don, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. In in this fast report, we go into some detail in the background describing. Um the the costs and equities that have been revealed by the city of Hollister in the past six, six to nine months. And the potential impacts that might have on the city's budget, uh providing uh different scenarios where if we were looking at. Uh the the original estimate in the twenty eighteen uh study, March one twenty eighteen study was around nine million dollars in twenty two, twenty three. And uh we're looking at a cost for the whole region of about sixteen million dollars. And when you apply uh anywhere between three and five percent of those costs to the city of San Juan Batista. Uh it can, it can almost triple our cost for fire services. A five percent increase is, we go from two sixty a year. To eight hundred thousand a year. Um three percent, three point five percent seems to be more in the ballpark. But in general, uh part of this report asks the the council to consider, as with the the county and the city of Hollister. To join together as representing that fire advisory, fire protection advisory committee. Uh of doing a feasibility study to discover exactly what each agency's share and portion of these costs should be. So having said that, uh we've met uh in July and and twice in August and most recently last Thursday. Uh at nine AM to discuss uh three things in general. Um a request for proposals. Uh to uh hire a consultant to to do a feasibility study. Uh a quest, uh we've provided the terms for proposed uh contract amendment. Uh the contract is proposed to expire after two hundred and seventy day notice. Uh in March of twenty twenty five, the original contract was set to expire in December twenty twenty five. And if we come forward with a contractual amendment, uh Hollister is more than willing to extend that term to twenty twenty eight. And that would give us time that to explore the feasibility study and and the adoption of a fire protection district. And then thirdly, um uh we have, we have the joint powers authority. Uh and an example from one of the finest uh districts in the state, the Livermore Pleasanton District. Um former city manager Ed uh Tuas has given the uh volumes on that district. And their five year strategic plan and how successful it's been. And so using that as a model, we've provided it in your packet today. Um uh we would move forward and and look at the strengths and weaknesses of that. And see how it might best apply to the three jurisdictions in the proposed uh district that that we're studying. But for now, the action being requested is that the cost of a new feasibility study move uh be determined and move forward. Um and the city take the lead, uh San Juan Batista, in finding a uh consultant. That can give us a good study and a good cost share analysis so that we can get to work at at forming this district. So. That's uh the request to simply approve the RFP in its format and on behalf of the fire protection advisory committee. Uh the county of San Benito and the city of Hollister send out this request with proposals that's attached to find a a. Uh a consultant to do the study for us. Uh the chief has been very instrumental in preparing the RFP. The original attempt back in twenty twenty three had two pages of specifications and and this has been expanded to a scope of almost four pages. Um it goes into quite a lot of detail on the history, uh including the IT, um the calls for service, all of the details. Um uh things that I'm just learning about, uh as well as the lack of process and then what would entail to actually form a district. So how much would it cost parcel property owners to contribute to the district? What would the governance structure look like? Would it be appointed? Would it be elected? Board members uh and advisory committee completely separate from all three agencies and have its own elected officials? And then uh lastly, uh in the uh instructions to bidders, we have a release of the RFP to be tomorrow. Um with a proposal meeting in November and a deadline first of May of the December. So we would hope to start this feasibility study after the first of the year uh with all three agencies on board. And the chief is here tonight. Uh chief, if you want to add any detail to that summary, that that would be great. And if the council has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Sorry, I just lost my page on the scope. Uh. The main focus being this RFP, um when it came up, the fire advisory committee meeting. Um I asked if we could talk about the scope specifically. Uh a little bit of the history of the fire service with the county specifically. And then transitioning into uh Hollister. For years, there's been needs identified through grand jury reports, feasibility studies, impact reports. And for the most part, those studies have been done and then placed on a shelf and nothing has happened. Uh with it, which is why we're in the predicament we are now. Uh the fire service in this county is drastically underfunded. Drastically understaffed. That includes both fire service and emergency services, uh EMS services. And my concern was to identify in this RFP to come up. Yeah, with somebody who could not only look at the fire district if that's the best option. But also give us a framework for a strategic plan for the county. Um and even if it doesn't indicate to form a fire district, either because it doesn't. Indicate that that's the best structure or doesn't indicate indicate that financially it's um plausible. But the hope was to actually have a framework for a strategic plan for us to move forward uh. With building out this county and getting to work on the fire service that's needed. Uh for fire engines in this county for thirteen hundred and eighty eight square miles. Uh that is minus the Roma Tri Counties area, that's that's definitely not enough. Two ambulances that. Um are barely hanging on is not enough. And this, the community as a whole, as this comes up and it it comes up each. It's come up several times over the past several years. Uh the community as a whole is, who is suffering from that. So. I I think uh the city manager and I spent quite a few hours in this room. And then uh the city manager of Hollister, the city manager, San Juan Batista, the acting uh. CAO from the county and myself sat down for more hours and then I think after the RFPs came out, there was multiple revisions. And hours put into that. So I think it's actually the RFP itself is is a great product that. Regardless of whether recommends the district or not, hopefully we can take it and move forward with the fire service in this county.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, John?
So as I understand the timeline, uh the 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 RFP will be. The bidding process will start, oh, start in November and you'll analyze the bids. Maybe November, December, January, somewhere around that area, is that the?
Thank you. The request for proposals will go out tomorrow. And then in October, early October, we have a question and answer period with the different firms. We plan to reach out directly to several firms to try and simulate several responses if we can. We have more than one in mind uh. That we've been uh suggested. So um we hope to work with the bidders uh through the proposal process in October. And then we close it and there's no more questions asked and then the proposals be submitted in November.
But there's not a hard line, like the bid is due November thirtieth.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, there is. Uh November uh the deadline first of May is December sixteen.
Okay, it's only off by two weeks. Okay, and then the the uh sorting through the bids uh. Deciphering all the the ins and the outs uh and comparing apples to oranges and getting them to apples to apples. That'll take about a month or or so.
It'll take a month and I and I think we should have a recommendation, the conversation with the advisory committee, which may take a couple of weeks to wait for that.
So early January is likely like the timeline?
Probably February.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've been sitting on this meeting forever, trying to go over with this. And I I appreciate all the work that. That you all have done on this and and giving uh Don and San Juan the opportunity to submit the RFP. Um I I'm not thrilled with how it came about. Um the city of Hollister pulling the two hundred and seventy day clause. Um uh was uh started by initiated by um one council member. Uh but it 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 did get us to a table where we're actually starting to have a conversation to to help the situation out. Um and I I'm thankful for the city of Hollister for agreeing to um. An extension through twenty twenty eight. Uh I think we could have gotten there maybe without the two hundred and seventy day threat. Um but we're there and um I'm thrilled and it is gonna be a little sore for a moment. Um but uh this is truly a long time coming and appreciate. Uh all the patience that. That has been had throughout this um experience and for you to help push this along. Uh just coming in and getting thrown into it is huge, huge. So I I really appreciate it. Um and looking forward to um to this process actually happening. Um so thank you all. Thanks, Don.
No, I just wanna say thank you to new fire chief. This is a huge task. And like you pointed out, you know, two ambulances and four rigs just aren't gonna cover it. And we're still growing and building, so this is really much needed. Um I don't understand all of the ins and outs of fire. But it sounds like the opportunity to stop that two hundred and seventy day time clock is one of the the goals of this. And also to bring people to the table and really get, you know, a good feasibility study. And either way we land, it's gonna bring in, hopefully, the end. Result is more services, more rigs, more ambulances, whatnot, and spread out the um the cost more equitable. Amongst the three entities and keep our citizens safe. Thank you.
Uh I'm looking forward to being able to review professional analysis on this and and, you know, data driven analysis, not social media driven. Analysis. Um and so thankful for your your part in bringing that forward. Yeah, thanks. Um yeah, thanks to Don for stepping up. Um you know, we're kind of taking. With with the help of of the chief, we're taking the lead on this. Um and that shows you how serious we think this is. Um and it was, and and I did point that out at the last meeting that we're not in this just for ourselves. Um. So we're moving along. It's been a long process. And I can tell you, chief, I I'm I'm happy that the city of Hollister chose the right person in this last chief's round. Because what you brought forward, I mean, you you opened up some eyes. Um and you've got a very calm demeanor about. Presenting it, it's and it's, it's helped about five of us. So so uh I I appreciate it and um. And just so everybody knows, Don, all this is, we're just basically giving you permission to go for it. There's no money exchanging hand or anything today.
Correct, correct. And we'll we'll come to agreement on a cost sharing arrangement to pay for the RFP at when the time is right.
Yeah. And you've been very vocal about how much of it we're paying for. So, okay, uh do we have any questions in Zoom? Doesn't look like it.
No questions in chambers and no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. It's a pleasure.
I I make a motion to um. Uh to send out the request for a proposal for a special district formation.
Um I I'm gonna take the second on this one, since we've been working so hard on this. So, hey Liz.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Protip Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Freos?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Okay, here we go. Um appoint a member of the city council to serve on the urban growth. Thank you, chief. Drive safe.
Chief, shout out to the coop.
You know, the original mascot for San Juan Fire was an eagle. Wasn't a chicken. It was this, it it was the San Juan Eagle. I know, I know. Um, okay, appointment, a member of the council to serve on the urban growth boundary, serve influence committee. Don, do we have a quick, I mean, should be pretty quick, huh? I, yeah.
Yeah, this is um, we we have a vacancy and it's the mayor's appointment and the council will will vote to.
Yep, and EJ, EJ um. Accepted it, so. Yes.
Say that if um council member Sebastian would like to be involved. There's been a change in the requirement for the attendance. It's two meetings a month. We're pushing forward till the end of the year, so it requires attendance two times a month.
Still good, okay. Any questions? Everybody still, okay. Uh audience, anybody from the? Nothing, nothing? Yeah, there's only a month left of it, so um, okay, um a motion to approve.
Does this need a motion? It's at the mayor's pleasure. I I make a motion to appoint EJ to the urban growth boundary.
I will second.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Protip Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
A.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Freos?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, uh planning commissioner, historic resource board vacancy. You wanna do it? Don, you want, you okay with EJ does the thing?
I've been out of the loop since we appointed the committee, so.
Okay. So, early in June, um Protim, Mayor and I uh. Requested of the two candidates that we were presented with uh. Meeting times, availabilities. Uh we interviewed one, one candidate. And then were informed by the second candidate that they would be uh unavailable for the entire month of June. Um. So that that time expired and I never received a a. A notice that they would like to, or that they were back in town. Um and then, most recently. The city deputy city clerk reached out for meeting times. I provided availability. I I didn't see you provided availability. And then I don't believe you received any availability back.
I I sent an email last week and another one this week and I have not heard back. Well, um I. I re- I sent an email today again, but last week and no response.
And a phone call?
And a phone call, correct.
Um so you were informed that the original candidate that we interviewed withdrew? So. Now we're back to zero again. Okay, I guess we gotta fly it again. Yeah.
So if we fly it again, where are we, September? We fly it again, it'll be October. We have two months, November, December. Um I I recommend we not fly and either. Don't do anything for the rest of the year or see if this candidate still wants to be on it and if it is, give it.
So I I believe the original, wh- when speaking to. So, I, I believe the original, wh- when speaking to the candidate who withdrew, part of the, reason for withdrawal, at least in part, was that they would be filling a not full-time. And that was part of the, and so with that knowledge, I agree with, with what you're saying. If we're gonna try to interview and fill for somebody for,
For a month?
A month.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not.
If there's even a meeting that month.
Yeah, okay.
John's. Questions, concerns?
I'm fine with four people for the rest of the year. If that's, yeah, that's good.
Okay, well, I guess we're not appointing.
Well.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
I don't think that meets the requirements for quorum because the panel or the commission is always sanctioned to have five. And we can turn to the city attorney today. So quorum would be, three out of the five. So if you're gonna have four, that's not a quorum. It's three out of five, always five. And they're saying that they're fine with four. I don't agree with that.
Yes.
But the total membership is five, so we are changing city ordinances and governance if we're gonna go down to four. We have to look what's on our books. And I'm in agreement with, um, Pro Tim Mayor's suggestion, about appointing the person that has been waiting. I understand there was scheduling difficulties. And then there was that person reaching out. I heard from them as well and there was just, things just fell through the cracks. So maybe one last chance. They've only got two months left, three months left.
I would need to know who that is before we can, uh, I, I can approve him or her.
Yeah, I agree, but. And if, and correct, wrong, they've been running with four. For almost a year and a half now and, and then, so three out of the four is a quorum. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I guess what the concern is, is we fly it again. And nobody, nobody answers, or we fly again and somebody answers, by the time they're appointed, it's going to be December and there won't be. So if we're not changing anything, we've never, nobody said we're going to change the, the amount of people on the planning commission. All we're saying is, why don't we just wait? Fill it with a full-term person.
Do you know how many seats are up in December? Is it two or three?
There might be three. I have to confirm, but I believe there's, there's three.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want to find out?
I'm just thinking about what the planning. You know, they, they award, permission for projects that can be monetarily equated. So I'm still thinking of this rule that I read and there's a, there's a, a government code and it has to do with what your, your seated body is. So if you have five, it involves, and I think, Don, you and I went over this, what happened here with that PLHA, um, funding. It always has to be three out of five. And that doesn't speak to the fact that, yeah, we didn't have a fifth person seated, but when you have to, vote and pass things of that nature, is that gonna qualify and I'm gonna turn it over, city attorney, maybe we need to look at that before we vote on this and say, yeah, it's okay. Just because we've been running empty with one seat.
But it, it seems to me that if you still have a quorum and a majority of the, if you have a quorum and a majority of the full body approving something, that would be.
Just like us.
But if three out of, yeah.
But the intention was five, just like, I'm sorry. Sorry to do this, but I just really wanted to stick with the process and what's on the government code. When Mayor Frios was gone that meeting, there were four of us seated, so always that had to be a three out of five vote, even if he was not physically present. Um, and so what happened was we had the Pro Tim Mayor recuse herself because of the situation of, property lines and whatnot. So then this came to a vote and so it was two and I was the no. And so that was interpreted initially, interpreted initially as a pass. It wasn't because it's based on the number of five seats on our council.
Yeah.
Just like we have five seats on our planning commission.
Yep. But if you, but if you had three voting to pass, that would be a majority of the fully constituted board. It'd be three out of four, three out of five. It doesn't, I don't think it matters.
And, and if we have a tie?
Just squeeze level up to us. Yes. Well, with that theory, then everything that the planning commission has passed in the last year and a half is bogus. Yeah, it's pretty close. So, the, yeah, they have, they have a quorum, three. That's all the vote, they need those three. You say yes or no? So do we, um, so now we're changing up, so we're not appointing a vacant position. So, it doesn't because we can, and, and Liz, tell us what we're supposed to do. We're not, we're not appointing, but we've decided to wait. So, all we, that's all we have to do.
Yeah. If that's what you, if that's what the council chooses, they can wait.
Okay. No action. Yeah, can we do that too, Liz?
Yes, and to answer Mayor Pro Tim's, uh, question about the, um, there's two seats that are up at the end of the year. Two seats.
Two seats. Okay, will we table or just continue? What's, what would be the best, continue to the next, okay. Okay, then do we need to vote on that? Okay, okay. Good, we're good with that. Moving right along. Great. Um, and this one here, this is kind of confusing me because is it really truly an action item or is it a, um, direct staff to open up recruitment, yeah, I guess, recruitment to fill the city treasurer position.
Yeah. Mayor, the city received notice that, uh, our treasurer has had a significant change in her life. And, um, is, is no longer able to attend city council meetings. And in conversation with some of the council and with the city clerk, it was felt that the whole point of having a treasurer was to have a public, non-bias opinion of our, of our records. Not that Wendy doesn't do a fantastic job for the last fifteen years or twenty years.
Yeah.
Um, and, and thank goodness is continuing to do that even tonight. Um, I, I had a chance to talk to Michelle and, and explain how hard it was to have the conversation because she's so fantastic. Her demeanor is so positive and we're just so grateful for her participation. I don't know, Wendy, if you wanna say something and add to that?
Um, you know, it, 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 some of my clients go through the process of actually allowing the board to designate a city treasurer, not go through an election process. So, um, I hold that position for those entities. Um, but I, I agree, having someone from the public to come in and have that kind of oversight, that outside vision on, on, on the finances is a good idea. Um, but, you know, to the direction of this, this, uh, board, whatever you prefer.
And we're, it's an appointment now, right? We did away with the election, so.
It's appointment now.
So just.
So we're asking that allow us to re-advertise.
By average, yeah, by it, okay. Questions, aren't you good?
Good, good.
Anybody in the public? Public, public, okay. Yeah. Yeah, a beautiful commitment she has now, so. So, um, I guess that's the guidance then. We do, should we vote on that or?
You, you can if you want to, um, there's no, there's no, you just provide direction.
Okay.
We asked for action, so.
Yeah, so, well, since it's under action item, just, I guess a vote.
Let's just crank it out.
Yeah, just, let's just do it.
We have a, a motion and a second on it.
I make a motion to, uh, go out for recruitment for the city treasurer position.
I will second that motion.
Just to clarify, um, open up the recruitment and do we have a date in mind to keep it open or just then to fill?
Oh, good golly.
Yeah.
Well, that could, like, like this, it could, like, for the planning commission, it could be forever. No, two weeks.
Two weeks.
And if we don't, and, yeah, for two weeks and then we'll readdress it in two weeks.
Wanna restate your motion?
Sorry. I make a motion to open up recruitment to fill the city treasurer's position, uh, for two, open up recruitment for two weeks, uh, to fill the city treasurer's position.
Again, we have this, want to do the second again? Do you need another second on that?
Yes.
It's been a change, yeah.
Yes.
I will second that.
Okay. All right.
Uh, councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Frios?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, discussion items. We finally got to the ones we've rolled over from last month. You gonna make it? Item seven, discussion, a, uh, draft vacancy fee ordinance. Uh, receive report from the attorney, so we have.
Yeah, you doing it or? Ri- Ryan has briefed on this and, and I asked him just to give the, the council an overview as an introduction. Um, we could bring this back at the October meeting, uh, to introduce the ordinance for the first time. If the, uh, council sees any, uh, need for changes or has any questions tonight, it's a good night to ask. So we can bring back a final draft to them in October. And, and you would try to run through the nuts and bolts for us.
As the, uh, C manager indicated, this is, uh, for discussion only at this time. Um, we were asked to, the city, city attorney was asked to research, uh, some possible, um, a possible vacancy fee ordinance to address, uh, boarded and vacant buildings. Uh, we looked at some templates from around the state. Um, and based this one on, uh, one that we thought was most analogous to, um, this city's position, uh, effectively it creates a scheme for, uh, giving notice to, uh, landowners of either boarded buildings and vacant buildings that constitute blight. And, and those terms are defined, um, within the ordinance, um, to either, um, address that situation or pay a fee. Um, and that fee is not set forth in the ordinance. Um, it would, that, that fee, uh, as it is currently designed would be set by, subsequent resolution. Um, and, and that's addressed there and where it says vacant or boarded building monitoring fee, uh, sub A. Um, so yeah, the, the, the process would be identifying, a building that is boarded or vacant, giving notice that property owner, um, of the requirements to either get a permit to fix the building, um, or pay the fee. It's pretty straightforward, um, but if you wanna take the chance to, uh, review it and, um, comment, it'll, it'll be up, I think, next meeting for, for first reading.
Okay, thank you. John, any questions on the?
Um, no, I'm, I'm just, um, generally in favor of this, but right now we have, on the other hand, there's two sides to every argument. We do have a lot of vacancies. And there's not a lot of businesses that are wanting to come here, so. We are imposing a real burden upon property owners. That being said, I think we probably should.
Thank you. Um, it, I, I would like to include, um, tenants, who are choosing not to do anything for whatever reason. Um, we have one in particular that has, um, had dressings on the window for, almost a year now. Um, so she's paying rent, they're paying rent, but, um, the city gets no benefit from it. So if we can include, um, and I don't know, I don't know the language to use there, but somebody who's not opening their doors. Oh, yeah, I like that too, non-operation. We did that with the parklet. Wasn't enforced, but we did it with the park.
So you, so you're, you're basically, you're saying for the, the tenant, not the owner? Okay, but wouldn't that be more of a civil thing between the tenant and the owner though? I mean,
Well, it's kind of like when we had Unamas and they weren't complying with our ordinances, so we went after the building owner. And when we threatened the building owner with, um, fines.
Yeah.
Boy, oh, boy.
So that's what I was just saying, we.
That little fire under somebody and got Unamas out.
Yeah. Uh, we could do the same thing with the building owner instead of.
Yeah, that, that's what I mean.
Tenant, yeah, okay. If a tenant doesn't, yeah, we go after.
Yeah, um, but, and, and I don't know how to ask for, um, what? No, uh, what, what kind of tenant? I mean, if we do this, when we do this, there's the possibility of having, I don't know, nine, nine, uh, nine bars brings in lots of cash.
Yeah.
Um, no, I was thinking more of, uh, nine more thrift stores. Um, that don't necessarily, um, when you have somebody sitting in a shop more often than not. Um, so, yeah, I don't know how to, how to word that, smith it, so you get, a, a money generator in, and I don't even know what that means. I, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know who's looking to become a small business owner in San Juan Bautista.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that this ordinance is the way to address that. That sounds more like a, a, a zoning issue. Um, and what types of uses we wanna permit in certain locations.
Perfect, thank you.
Just like we can, yeah, clinics and.
Yep, nope, that's perfect. Thank you for the explanation, yeah.
Good.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think this, um, this example here looks really simple. It's pretty much to the point. Um, the question that I had is already at the bottom of vacant or boarded building monitoring fee. Um, item B, fee waiver. So the vacant or boarded building monitoring fee may be waived by the building official, upon showing by the owner that the owner has obtained a building permit and is progressing diligently to repair the premises for, occupancy or, so then we're just giving them a pass if they are pulling the permit, and building. Uh, I'm just thinking that that's gonna take a little bit more of our staff time to, then all of a sudden, you know, we have to monitor, maybe they get an extension, so it just drags the thing out.
Wouldn't that be kind of like Neil's Market? Where, where it's been vacant for a long time, but they haven't been doing tenant improvements the whole entire time, so.
Really, they, sometimes they've been no work at all. But I'm just saying, it's just kind of one of those things that, do we wanna do a fee waiver? And then have, have staff monitor and, and I agree with what Pro Tim Mayor was saying, but I think that's a whole different ordinance about, you know, cause this is gonna push the property owners who just got their building rented, versus paying us the fee and what kind of business are they gonna rent to? But that's a whole other topic, I think, but it's a good point.
I, I'm excited about this, uh, from a standpoint of, of, um, it being a tool, um, to help. it being a tool um to help us to take care and and safeguard our 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 downtown, our city and have have some of our um vacant commercial properties uh. You know, to be of use to the city and the and the citizens. Um I actually do agree with you about the the out and the extension. I don't know what the potential legalities are for for waivers, but um I like the idea of thinking of thinking of it as even more simple. You get the fine, but you don't get a second one if you're doing what you're supposed to do. Um and I do like the idea of, I already have forgotten the phrase, not just vacancy, but um non-operation being included as well. And on that subject, on what you were talking about, about the um uh the the waiver. Um so if we, if we find them, then does that mean they have to start the permit process all over again? Or do we find them and then extend their permit?
Uh I don't read those two things as being mutually exclusive. Um the building official still has the discretion whether to waive the fee or not. So um if they, if the building owner has obtained a building permit, um the building official can still enforce the fee. Uh particularly if the building official uh determines that the owner is not also progressing diligently to repair the premises.
Okay.
Um so I don't think that the way that this is currently set up um automatically waives the fee just because a permit has been applied for.
Okay, and Don, are permit extensions, are they, do they pay for an extension? Is there a fee for that?
Um they expire after six months, right? Six months of no inspection and no action. So the building official has that built into their code. Um Are there extensions when there's no action? I'm not sure that they have that authority. I I think it's embedded in the code that it expires. And they would have to reapply.
Reapply, okay. Um and then on the second page, um the paragraph or the paragraph C or the section C on the very bottom, it says the hearing shall be set and conducted by, this is talking about going to a um application hearing. Um and there's a line, I I would imagine any hearing would be in front of this body, wouldn't it, for a that makes sense?
So there are, there is an administrative hearing process in most jurisdictions for small, small matters. Um parking citations, when they decriminalized parking citations in the nineties, they created a hearing process. And in one organization I worked for, we bargained an attorney on Tuesday nights once a month, and we lined up the parking protest down the block. And they all complained about our terrible parking enforcement, so.
Okay.
So I think it's an administrative hearing process.
Okay.
Happened before it comes to the judicial hearing process of the council.
It I think it could be set up either way. Um.
That that's, I'm, so should we just put in that little line administrative? Fill that in.
I would say administrative first, then go to the council.
Then then if they want.
Administering here, uh hearing officer.
Makes sense?
Yes, but.
Be the city manager most likely.
Yes, but but um to to avoid the possibility of of the potential of bias. Which might or might not have occurred at one point, not from our city manager. Um I said not. Um wouldn't it be better to come before the council? I mean, we've heard lots of of issues come before us. Just this council.
Yeah.
Has had several items come before us where people have asked for something or other.
Could we do a?
That's usually on appeal. If we're not the first judge.
Yeah, that's, could we do an ad hoc, a three-person? No?
I'm just trying to get away from the bias that might or might not have.
Okay, but the the I understand that.
The bias can be avoided on appeal, right? Like you don't like the decision, you appeal it.
Appeal it to the council.
Sure, there's still, there's still an out there, they're not stuck.
It's like if the planning commission turns something down, they appeal, okay. And I only had one more, I got up, Jesus. I got, no, I can't, that looks scary. Uh on securing vacant buildings, kind of the same thing, it says uh any owner disagrees with the decision of the city manager related to any specific securing requirements may appeal by submitting written appeal hearing request to the city manager or the city clerk within thirty days is received, but who's she? Who's he or she going to appeal to? So it'd be, okay, counsel, okay. Got it. Okay, don't fall out of your seats, y'all, but I actually agree with this. And and just it's a reason why, ev- every time I drive in town and I see that vacant um red building, it just
Drives me nuts.
Just drives me nuts, yeah, so I'm. Any, are we all finished with our comments and questions? Yeah, you'll pick your, pick yourself up off the floor.
One more comment, um I do know one property owner, it's the Plaza Market um property that because uh Proton Mayor touched on this, is that the non-operable or inconsistent opening of businesses um that when they rent from this person, he has them agree to being open, they commit to certain hours, and I don't know. That's something that we can do maybe with business permits. When they come and pull a business permit, they, if they say that we're gonna run an ice cream parlor downtown and we're gonna be open X amount of hours on these days, and if we see that they're not then that's what you were speaking to, is that what I'm understanding?
Um no, more so of a tenant who's coming in and uh and not occupying. The space might be occupied, but the doors are not open. Uh like the bluebird.
Right, I I'm concerned about a briefer term because you have uh illness, sickness, owner owner operator. Um so somebody may be closed for three weeks because of they had surgery or something. But if they're there for six months, then you have trouble.
Yeah, there would be certain instances where we would, you know, be empathetic, yeah, they had surgery or their husband had brain surgery.
Yeah, I don't wanna touch that on operating hours for a private industry or private business. Yeah, that's what, well, that's what we don't get into, cause we're United States of America. Yeah, um well, that's, that would be their business, so. Okay, um any public comment? Doesn't look like it. Is our camera guy still alive out there? He's still, how you doing out there, party? Okay, um well, we're moving right along, I guess we're moving that up to the next to, so next month and public hearing, that correct? Or first reading, okay?
So.
Thank you. Yeah, um yeah, moving on, hang in there, EJ. B, uh Wine Barrel, two-way traffic, Third Street, uh Don, do you have a report on this?
Um I do have uh feedback from our city engineer, um because in the traditional engineering mode, when you wanna change traffic from two-way to one-way, um there's a whole process that goes with that, and there's a whole step, list of steps that are taken um uh to implement it. So the question that I asked to Doug Pike was um now that we have the barrels and we have established a one-way street, have we done it correctly? And he talked about the ability to to move all of the stop signs and all the parking and so forth out towards the center and recreate that center line, but he concluded by saying that if you if you don't have an imminent danger out there now, then you don't have any reason to change things right away. Um and so he kind of left me, of course, uh if you wanna do something, do it. If you don't wanna do something, it's not the end of the world. So I don't know, uh it to me, it looks a little bit incomplete when you remove the the parklets, you just have the barrels. I I don't know, I I was really interested in hearing uh the city council and maybe the historical society and other other opinions on this.
Just you keep going. John, do you have any questions, concerns about?
I like the barrels, um it slows down traffic. If we take them out, I'll guarantee you'll see an increase in speed in traffic, and then you'll hear about it from our constituents that everyone's speeding. Um you know, and um whether or not that's true would require a traffic study. And oftentimes, traffic studies show that they're not speeding, but when you're standing next to a car moving fifteen miles an hour, it seems fast. Um so I I think the traffic, the wine barrels do a good job of slowing down traffic on Third Street. And that's probably overall a good thing.
I like the one-way. Um I like the barrels. I'm not a fan of paying um the fees that we pay to keep them looking the way they are. Um but I'm a fan of of both. I I like the one-way. I like driving five miles an hour down the street and looking on both sides to see what's going on and who's there and what store I wanna pop into really quick. Double parking, getting knockers.
I am going to say that I am a fan of neither. I am a longtime, fourth generation, daughter's fifth generation now, San Water. And that is a historic one-on-one route. So we shifted rapidly in response to a global pandemic. You know, I'm in the medical field. It's no longer a pandemic, folks. We no longer have COVID killing millions of people. We have vaccines if you choose to afford yourself to get one. We have um mutation of the virus to the level of an annual seasonal flu. Um that was a flex for all cities to award safety measures and precautions. And I don't know how the one-way street came into it. I think it was because we had parklets to um afford restaurants and eateries and bars to serve people outdoors on the parklet, so it was a natural um response to make it a one-way street. But I feel that they've uh it's outlived its purpose. The wine barrels, I don't feel are attractive at all. They're a hindrance if you wanna park there. They take up parking space. Uh the plants are dying, they get shifted around, sometimes they get knocked around. Um I also hear from longtime business owners and new business owners that, you know, it would be nice to have two-way traffic. I mean, we've had it for decades, over hundreds of years, and there weren't too many speeders and hit-and-runs downtown that I recall as a child or an adult. And it affords people the ability to look and kind of cruise the main street like we used to and park on both sides of the street, because what I've seen um as a resident and hanging out at the Luck Museum, doing my decorations that I do seasonally, you have tourists coming in from uh from the roundabout area from north, and they're looking on their Google map how to get to our main street. And they're confused and turned around, and then if they go one way, they pass the whole one-way pass, they don't see the businesses. So I really feel that it contributes to lack of people stopping. They might just cruise at one time and then leave, cause there's no parking. Um so I'm not in favor of retaining that for the historical aspect of it, I'm gonna fight for that, but also the medical aspect, it's no longer a pandemic. Those are a flex to allow safety measures, and we're no no longer there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more, less, or no change in parking with the one-way versus two-way, Don? It's the same? I do enjoy being able to open my car door without getting buzzed.
I I like not having semis go in both directions.
Slower, because of the slower pace with the one-way.
Yeah, I I'm, I hear both sides of the argument on the barrels. I don't necessarily have an opinion one way or another. Um could take them or leave them. Um I do find myself getting annoyed sometimes if I wanna get downtown quickly with the one-way, but that, again, just lends credence to the fact that it's slowing things down, um and that, I think is a good thing. I don't really have any thoughts.
Okay, thanks. Um you can definitely tell it, Carlos isn't doing weekends anymore, isn't he? Because he used to water all those succulents, that was his main job, you, and he loved it, he did it with a smile. Um I've heard the same from everybody, two ways. Um there are complaints about the 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 succulents are looking a little bit um ratty. When, refreshment, Don, refresh my memory, the the parklets, the final, 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 final date for the parklets is July next year?
Twenty-six, I believe it's twenty-six. June, June thirty, twenty-six was the state uh alcohol, alcohol.
Okay. Yeah, okay, and we kind of rode that, those coattails.
For the food and beverage channel.
Yeah.
We have one left.
So, did I, I see if I can, to put it back to two ways, do we have to do a traffic study?
No, I don't think we have to do anything. We should probably restripe it.
Just restripe it, yeah.
Maybe do a flurry seal and restripe it.
Yeah, and I understand, and and as far as the historic highway one-on-one, it hasn't been the historic highway one-on-one in since what, nineteen fifty-seven? Um when they, when they built, when they built one fifty-six, I know, so.
There's a bell.
And so's, so is Route sixty-six, but it's no longer Route sixty-six, so. Yeah, I know, those all just went up mysteriously. Did the planning commission approve those?
Um wait, what?
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, um. I like the one-way, I like the slow pace. I like, like you, I get a little frustrated, sometimes I get to come up and come around to to do it, but um I don't know, this is, this is a tough one, because I'm used to both now. You know, um.
I like the slower pace.
I I just, I do too, I just like the slower pace. Um wish there was a happy medium on this.
Oh, we can read this, we still have one parklet, so we can't go to two-way.
Yeah.
So, uh moot point, we can revisit in uh July first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, cause we're not, we can't force them, after we said we're gonna go to that date, we can't force them to.
Yeah.
Take it out. Now, if they take it out, then I guess we're back to this conundrum.
Then then we can revisit then. Um I I agree with the raddiness of the succulents. Um we pay a lot of money to have not ratty succulents. Um so if we got some other traffic calming something to to push cars in that direction without endangering anybody's lives. I, you know, there's all different kinds of ballards and things like that.
I I like the barrels, um and this was a, this was an instrumental winery community. I mean, we had the Almedin tasting room here, you know, at one point in time, Almedin was the largest vineyard in the world. Um a man named Vachi had a shop here, and he planted all those vineyards in the in the eighteen fifties. Um so it's, it's, it's a, it does fit our community, um and all the all the chicken halves we cooked during the Fiesta Rodeo went in wine barrels, so. Until somebody from the health department said, hey, you're not supposed to do that. Until somebody from the health department said, hey, you're not supposed to do that.
Those were conscientious decisions. They wanted uh, the circle resources board played in on design guidelines back in. Uh, the summer of twenty twenty, and they wanted natural colors, natural wood. And it was actually the the vendors association that helped us locate those barrels. For fifty dollars a piece, we got a bargain, so so the wine industry was definitely very helpful.
Yeah, so if we can resurrect our succulents, make them look better.
Maybe a shrubbery.
Shrubbery, yeah, apple trees. That's easy on the money pipe on reference. Absolutely, we're here to discuss this.
I would be, my opinion is that I'm I'm still diehard for getting back our scenic. Two-way street. I mean, if you go on social media or go any historic books and you look at that view. That someone shot from the long end of the red um, vacant wine barrel and they just did like a. Straight shot down the street where two lanes are open. It's gorgeous. Someone put that up like six months ago and I'm like, wow, that's what that street should look like. And it's very sad to see it because those wine barrels get shifted around. I don't think they're traffic calming. They're a pain in the pitute to try to back up and park there. I mean, I could see you got one, one holdout person that. Because of the twenty twenty-six deadline is gonna keep that corner park lit. Um, yeah, I guess the two-way street, you can't do it. That makes sense. But why not work halfway and take those barrels out? You know, that would open up a little bit more ease of parking and a little bit more. Aesthetically, it would look a lot more historically because I don't think those wine barrels add anything.
Kind of ugly.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
Nobody in chambers and no hands raised, mayor.
Okay, well we. Beat that horse to death. All right, um. We have one more exciting discussion. Utility billing, S I M C, utility billing. Don, did you have yet a couple?
Sure, there are just a few thoughts on this, um. It is frustrating, um. And it is somewhat related to uh, our postal system as much as anything, where we're trying to get utility bills. But we can't start to prepare them till a certain date until we've uh. Uh, so so we tried to fix a late date. If it's not in by what, the twenty-fifth of the month, it's late. And then that only gives us five or six days to turn around and attach a fine and send a bill out. And so it's chaos. If you've been in the the front office. When the bills are going out, the the folding machines are going and the copy machine's going and we're trying our best to get them out. So what uh, Liz and and Carmen have are are hoping to do is establish. Uh, a modern, more modern way of paying, and of course, we know uh, that 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 we have residents who won't go this route, but. We're building a a constant contact list of all of our customers, trying to make it easy to pay your uh, water bill. Uh, by email. You get your, you get your bill emailed to you. Instead of on a Friday afternoon when we mail them out on a three-day weekend and you don't get it till Tuesday or Wednesday. Uh, you get your email uh, Friday afternoon and and you have more time. Uh, to do that. So we're gonna start combining email billing with uh, uh, hard copy billing. Uh, to cover both bases and and give people the best chance we can and the earliest notice we can. Um, so we can't, just because one person pays their bill early doesn't mean that we can't send them out a bill without a late fee on it. Early, uh, we we have to do it all at once. We have to do it in batch processing. So I don't know if you want to add anything that to that, Liz, but that's one of our complications.
And I also wanted to add that our um, current vendor um, has the ability for you to be able to sign up on their portal. And um, and look up your account, invoicing, your usage. Um, so whatever you want to look on your account, you're able to go into the portal, sign up, and then look at your um, account.
Because we do have people, uh, we do have people who leave the the community for thirty, sixty, ninety days. And they know it's it's gonna be four hundred bucks a month, so so they send actually payment in advance and have a credit. That way they don't have to pay for three months. So there's both extremes, but mostly I have to say that eighty percent of our residents are just barely making it and and. It's been very hard to pay the water bill at all for a lot of them, but we know that.
Personally, I would enjoy getting um. The bill via email. I get most of my, or a lot of my bills via email. Uh, so it's kind of what I'm used to. Um, I have some, I I understand that there's a fair number of people who. Don't use a computer, don't have email. Also, we tend to send out like in the last water bill that I got. I think it was last week or. We got a a notice from Roy about the abandoned uh, vehicles. That also can be sent via email, but once again, there's a lot of people who. Yeah, don't have email, so that's. Uh, I I think we're gonna be stuck with both worlds for a while, but uh, you know, I'm in favor of of. Vibrating to an email-based system. Uh, does, does that make sense to anybody or?
Um, it, there's a fee associated with credit cards, and I think that's another complaint.
I've been um, trying to get ahold of our our current vendor to see if there's something that we can do. Um, but it uh, I haven't been able to connect with them. Sometimes they're hard to get ahold of, so. Um, as soon as I have an answer and maybe we can look at something else um, in terms of um, online billing.
Wasn't there a point where somebody said? A bill or a law that came out about. Not having that fee associated with online. You don't have the fee if you pay with your debit card? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
I hate that website. It's so awful.
We'll fix it.
Not very user-friendly.
Web design engineer. Yes, like, so you can, I I get my bill. Can we have a paperless option, stop? You know, don't send me paper.
So a few, a few months ago, we had sent out and um, uh, an E uh. Like a notice in your, in your statement and your invoice. That's it.
Nope, we gotta go.
That gave you the option of. Sorry about that, um, that gave you the option of signing up. And like Don said, we have like a constant contact database where we're sending out, um. We probably received them. People have the ability to be able to sign up, and that was our intent, to try to see if we can get more people sign up. Through email and get more email and instead of electronic um, information versus paper. Because it's a, it it's a lot of work, like Don said.
Yeah, so I, right now, I get both. I get the email and I get the paper. And I don't open it, I just shred it and then pay the email. Is there isn't, so the web, I think the issue is that the website with the third-party vendor is disjointed from. City database, right? Like, it's just kind of a separate thing. So when you log onto your account online, there's no option that says. Don't even, don't send me mail. Uh, so that, if they could do that, that. If now you're giving people the option and you can keep advertising, hey, would you like to do that and show where the button is, but um, most other. Bills, you you constantly have that option to go paperless.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll look into it all.
Yeah, they want you to because it costs them money.
Yeah, it's expensive. It's, yeah, we spend, I think, like. Over a thousand dollars um, trying to send all the mailing that we do, so it's very expensive. Yeah. Yes, staff time, um, so we'll like, we'll look into um, those two items and then hopefully we can come up with something.
And then the the debit card thing, if if there's an option, and P G N does this, that you pay by debit, no fee. And we'll say that their credit card fee is only a dollar thirty-five, flat rate. Huh? No, their ATM is nothing, it's free, debit is free, and the. The. One of the two, it's less than two bucks. Flat rate, and the fact that ours is a multiplier, like, I think we're getting. The fact that you can't get ahold of our vendor and they charge us a multiplier.
You're fired. Not not you, Liz, the vendor.
We might, we might want to shop, shop a new vendor that's that makes y'all's life easier and keeps people happy. And I think, I think. Whoever Recology is using, it's like, it's some local smaller company too, is pretty good. Um, but they integrate to, they integrate to Recology's website, and Recology's not doing any of that. Like, they, they, they portaled into Recology, Recology's page, they manage the payment, but whoever Recology is using is pretty good. And it's a. They don't charge a credit card fee. They're a huge company, just like P G N. Always getting charged you. Yep, that's all I got.
I had. Thanks. I went on the website and I went to the uh. Utility billing and hit pay bill. And just out of curiosity, I put this month's rate in, and the service fee was eight dollars and eighteen cents. I was like, oh, wow, okay, but there's this other one that's in here, this um, this huge. Link and it doesn't exist, or at least I tried it three times and I couldn't get it to work. So I was like, okay. Um, and I'm terrible with that stuff, but it um. I, we get our drinking water from dam water and they send me an email. And then the next day I get. Uh, basically another email and it just, you open it up and it says pay here and you hit the boop. And it's got all my information and then I just confirm it. Or I add my debit card and it.
Having to type my credit card every freaking month?
And don't you have, don't you ever know what what you owe?
Yeah, well, you know what I owe.
Yeah, it's just.
It's work. Yeah, that's, that's what Recology's saying, unless you're, unless, because I always do it as a um. A guest, I should get, yeah.
I never use the Recology website because I have a setup with my bank where. Recology and P G N and all these just appear in my bills. Column or whatever you want to call it, and then I click the payment, I pick, I click the day that I want to pay. And then it just does it automatically, you know, and I don't have to enter credit card number or anything.
Yeah, you can set that up with P G N also, but um, the the way dam, dam water does it, it's really easy. Yeah, dam water. They have dam ice too. Um, yeah, like I said, I I tried this damn line, yeah. Tried this, I tried this, like I said, I tried this big thing and it was like, and I agree, like, we're on vacation, I, there's no way I could pay. I was like, oh, man, so I got a pretty good bill. You know, it's a bigger heart attack than the bill I have now. Um, yeah, I, yeah, it'd be nice to. It'd be nice to be able to do it online. Um, and I didn't, where was the? I probably didn't even, I'm so bad at bills that I can read it, but there was an option to go get email bills? My bills emailed to me?
So to set up an account, to set up an account as well, to view your, your bills, your invoice.
And that's what this big, long.
I I get an email, utility bill email every month.
Okay, that, see, that would help me huge.
And that's because you signed up on their website.
Okay.
Probably.
Years ago. And I said, and John said this, you know, like, uh, if our um. Our seniors, a lot of them aren't going on this, and. Um, I know they're gonna, you know, the seniors, um, they got an office down there and they'll start working with.
We are working with, we will be working with seniors.
Seniors with their computers and stuff, so it'd be huge for them, but. Um, this may be for another date, but it just, just does, it does say utility billing. Um, like that, we can figure somewhere down the line. How maybe our seniors over sixty-five get us, get a fixed rate. Instead of having to pay that tier, as long as they don't abuse it. It's, it's getting tough, so it is utility billing, I should return. So, yeah, so um, it uh, we looks like we have any, any other questions, concerns? Hope, we have public comment?
Yes.
Fire away.
This is Cara. This is the one I've been waiting for. Okay, I do not understand why San Juan Batista is still operating in the Stone Age. All of my bills are automatically paid. And San Juan Batista, I'm sure would rake in, you know, the money that is owed to them. Right away if they could set up an automatic payment system. And the debit card was mentioned, but that's because it comes directly out of your bank account. And that's how automatic payments work. You know, the utility gets it right out of your bank account. And this idea of, oh, email, it's gonna be easier and that, no. You know, you still have to write a check, mail it, make sure it gets there by the deadline. Or you have to run down, you know, to City Hall to pay it. That is ridiculous. And who wants to pay fees, you know, to pay by credit card? Um, it just needs to be automatic, just like everybody else. I don't know why we can't set it up that way, and it would be so convenient for everybody in town. Anyway, that's my two cents worth. Thanks.
Flat rate two cents, are we gonna, we're gonna apply a multiplier on that?
Yeah, no multipliers, enough multipliers unless it's in a. Casino. My Texas tea. Okay, um, anything else? Uh, future, in any agenda items you guys want to hear in the future?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
Um, I I think we do need to have a discussion on economic development. If you drive down the town today like I did. It looks bad. It looks bad. It looks bad because of of JJ's being gone, looks bad because of the red house. It's upset Scott and I for the past, how many years? We we don't know, because we've lost track. Um, Eighteenth Barrel being gone looks bad and vacant. Vacant storefronts look bad. This town should be, when I first moved here, it was like a museum. It was. But one that you lived in and you went there and we had, we had twice as many restaurants in two thousand and two as we do today. Literally twice as many. And I, I could name them all that have gone away, but you don't want to take that time. But anyway, we need to have economic development on the, on the agenda sometime soon. Thank you.
Anything else? Nothing, nothing? Guess where we're at? The A word.
Go ahead.
Nope.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it. You know why I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman? Mayor Pro Tim Jordan? Councilmember Maurice Lopez? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Frios?
Yes.
Yes. No, no, my James Earl Jones was.